On item 77, I think councillor Whitehead, you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion moved by myself, seconded by the mayor Fred Eisenberger, that the Hamilton Light Rail environmental project report, EPR, adendum for B-line, PD 17056 citywide, item 8.2, referred to council by General Issues Committee on April 19th, 2017. This would be replaced with A, that the Hamilton B-line Light Rail Transit LRT Environmental Project Report, EPR, adendum, attached as appendix A to the report, PD 17056, be updated to include the three kilometer section from Queenston traffic circle to Eastgate, as shown in the 2011 approved EPR. B, that the updated EPR adendum for the LRT system from Eastgate to Mc— I'll say that again— from Eastgate to McMaster be submitted by staff to the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change, MOECC, and after the EPR is submitted, a copy of the final submission be provided to council for information. C, that the current provincial procurement process be updated to include the three kilometer section from the Queenston traffic circle to Eastgate, as outlined in the updated EPR adendum. And D, that this resolution be forwarded to the province of Ontario, the premier and the minister of transportation and metro links.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a number of speakers, I have, and if I've missed anyone, I apologize, because everybody hit the glass at the same time. So I have so far councillors Johnson, Jackson, Collins, Ferguson, Partridge. Have I missed anyone? Not yet. Okay, councillor Johnson, Aidan Johnson.
Thank you very much. And Mayor Fred, there's a strong argument that says we're all sick of talking about LRT, so we all ought not say very much. That said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ignore that argument a little and talk a little bit about Mr. Mayor, the Renaissance humanist scholar Orlando Paschetti gave us the phrase, "The better or the perfect is the enemy of the good." And I apologize to the councillors of Italian-Canadian heritage, and those listening who have strong Italian. I'm about to try to, try to speak a little bit of Italian and give you the words as Orlando Paschetti spoke them. "Il meglio, il nemico del bene." To reiterate, "The better," or if you prefer, "the perfect," is the enemy of the good. And we know this phrase in, in English in kind of a different way. It's, it's an admonition that we hear a lot. Don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And these words have been on my mind, Mr. Mayor, all throughout our LRT debate. The danger or the bad of letting the perfect be the enemy of the good. And particularly, those words have been on my mind because of the volatility of our debate. I am pro-LRT, and I'm very proud to have run to be Ward One councillor on a pro-LRT platform. All throughout my Ward One campaign, I was in dialogue constantly with both pro-LRT citizens in the ward and anti-LRT citizens in the ward, as well as those in the middle. And that discussion continued when I had the privilege of coming to City Hall. To this day, up until about 45 minutes ago, I was in active conversation in this building with people who are pro-LRT and anti-LRT, and those who are in the middle. And I'm going to start just by clarifying, because even at this late juncture, it still requires clarification why I, and I think a lot of other citizens, are pro-LRT. I'll be super, super fast. And for me, it really is about economic development for the city. I'm just gonna quickly give the five reasons, the economic reasons, why it is right to continue with this project and do this project. Those five reasons are: harnessing McMaster, suburban taxation, climate change readiness, infrastructure jobs for people who need jobs, and fifth, the city's brand. So number one, we want Toronto and all the other financial centres of Canada to have ready, quick access to McMaster Innovation Park and McMaster campus, so we can build industry and create jobs. We also want for McMaster students to be able to go downtown to Ward Two and spend money there, and bring our vital McMaster community into the rest of the city, not just for cultural and social reasons, but for economic reasons. Make them live here, make them spend money here, build a better economy. That's the first reason, and it's a Ward One-ish reason, and I truly love it. Number two, suburban taxation. We know, Mr. Mayor, that LRT is going to, is already increasing the values of properties in the old city of Hamilton. This means that we of the old city of Hamilton can start to pay our share of the tax burden, the increasing tax burden in our municipality, thereby providing relief to the suburbs. And Mr. Mayor, I ask you, what is wrong with that? Nothing. Third economic reason, climate change readiness. We know that climate change is going to have a significant impact on our economy in the future. It's already started. We know that we have a moral duty to take proactive response. LRT is part of our response, preparing our economy for what is coming. Let's do it, let's be responsible, let's not wait till it's literally too late. Fourth economic reason, infrastructure jobs. Why not create jobs in our city by constructing a billion-dollar infrastructure project? There is no good rebuttal. There is no good rebuttal. Fifth. Fifth, Mr. Mayor, fifth, Mr. Mayor, is a very tricky and subtle argument, but it matters a great deal, and it still isn't robustly understood. The fifth economic argument on my mind, and compelling me, is the city's brand. What is the city of Hamilton? What is our identity? Are we a modern and cosmopolitan city that embraces public transit as part of what a real city is, part of what a modern city is, or do we ignore that vital principle of city building? I say, Mr. Mayor, that Hamilton needs to be proud of its history, proud of its present, and bold about its future. That is our brand, and LRT is part of it. So let's strengthen our brand and help our economy in that way. Those are the five core economic arguments. But I want to go back to that quote I love so much, "Don't let the perfect or the better be the enemy of the good." The reason that those words matter to me is this. I have a deep respect for those in this debate who are anti-LRT. They have, almost all of them, the vast majority of them, the best interests of our community in mind. They think genuinely that there's a better transit option out there. They think genuinely that there are ways of taking bold, real, helpful action for our economy that do not involve the challenges that LRT will necessarily bring to our community. This, Mr. Mayor, I admire, because it is utopian thinking, because it is very hopeful thinking. But, Mr. Mayor, the anti-LRT case is a case of letting the better or the perfect, a futuristic, utopian vision, be the enemy of the present good, a good that we can do today, that will actually have a true beneficial impact. Let us not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Let us do the right thing and vote for LRT. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just, 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 I mean, I'm gonna allow some applause, but if you could keep it down to a dull roar, we've got a lot, a number of speakers, and, you know, I appreciate the fact that there are two, four, forces here for and against. And if we can just contain ourselves, I think it'd be great, but I appreciate the applause, and I think appropriately done for each speaker, if you so choose. Councillor Jackson.
Thank you very much. I much appreciate it. Councillor Jackson, you got applause before you even started.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, before I read a speech that I prepared on my letterhead, typically, when we provide correspondence, we do it ahead of the agenda and ahead of the meeting, but in checking with the acting clerk, Janet Pilon, with you and council's concurrence, after I read my speech, if you don't mind, I'd like to have it then given to the clerk for the official record. Typically, you would do that before the meeting and the agenda and the meeting started, but I wanted everyone to hear what I had to say directly and verbally, including those listening by cable 14 and live stream. So I'm just asking for that privilege after my speech is done, Mr. Mayor, that the clerk can take my letterhead.
If you move it and someone seconds it, we can make that happen.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thanks, councillor Marilla. Dear Mr. Mayor, council colleagues, members of the public and media, let me be perfectly clear. I support city building, public transit, new investment, and new infrastructure. However, I also have grave concerns of the unknowns with this mega project, in that there could be tax impacts and future community impacts. The remaining challenge for me is to get to a point in the process where we can reliably understand these financial and community impacts. So, after careful consideration of all the data and facts provided to date around this mega project, and as it relates specifically to the environmental assessment, EA phase of this project, I believe at this point I can vote in favor of filing the EA. But I want to make clear my reasoning for supporting the EA at this time. This is a very complex project, requiring many incremental reports and approvals along the long project continuum. Those previously presented reports and the subsequent required approvals up to this point in time that are necessary for such complex projects, and now, this EA approval is another step in this mega project's continuum in order to stay on the proposed project's schedule. The supporting and approval of the EA at this time is just another component and part of the normal process of any project, and by supporting the EA at this time, it will allow the planning phase of the project to proceed, and the EA to be posted on the Ministry of the Environment's registry to meet provincially legislative requirement for a 30-day public comment period. In no way is my support and approval of the EA to be considered giving my full support to the LRT project implementation until the crucial reporting phase on the operating and maintenance costs and capital cost impacts are known fully, and who is responsible for any capital cost overruns. I want to be clear that my final decision will not be made until these costs and responsibilities for these costs are known, as this is incumbent upon me as a councillor and for the constituents of my ward, that these crucial fiscal issues and responsibilities be fully understood before agreeing to proceed with approval of full project implementation. As well, I will require a level of certainty that the project bid will include a "by-Canadian" provision to the extent legally possible, as it relates to the materials and equipment required to build and operate the system. Also, that the city of Hamilton's fair wage policy and the hiring of local trades are incorporated as components of the bidder's package. Also, that the amalgamated local transit union is given consideration in potentially operating the system, and/or that their rights to organize the employees who operate the system as allowed under current government laws. Lastly, that a group from the city appointed by council meet with our provincial counterparts to discuss extending the route to Eastgate Square, fully funded by the province. In conclusion, Mr. Mayor, given the many, many, many times I've previously publicly asked at what critical point of the project continuum I could make my final decision on project implementation, I therefore reserve the right to withdraw my future support. Thank you, and I'll, and I'll submit this now for the official record. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I have councillor Collins. Councillor Collins?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, as part of this job, we're oftentimes faced with the challenges of dealing with very contentious issues, and, and I've been here for a number of terms, and I've had the, the honour and the privilege of serving my constituents for a number of years, and having been tested, I would say, politically several, several times by issues on a very macro level that affect the entire community, and maybe not just my ward. And this one that we're dealing with tonight is certainly no different, and falls into that category. And, you know, I could point back to Red Hill, that was constructed through our ward at the time, as you recall, we were wardmates. And, and it certainly wasn't an easy process to go through, because we had a split in our ward. Our constituents were the most affected by it, and I think if we look back, we would say that by and large, that, you know, the bulk of the opposition came from those wards that bordered the valley that included our own. And, and no different for the stadium, certainly, in terms of dealing with that. And, you know, had you polled people at the time, and we didn't have a poll at that time, but had you polled people in the, in the neighbourhoods across the city, you would find a very eclectic mix of responses and levels of support for one site or the other, or, in some cases, no support at all for a stadium. And so, certainly not easy to deal with issues along those lines, and I guess you could probably include amalgamation. So LRT falls into that category, and, and there are certainly no easy answers when it comes to, to dealing with the LRT project. We're also forced at, at times to make decisions that, on a very micro level or at a ward level, you know, certainly test our political patience, if you want to call it that, in terms of making decisions that, where you have a divided community. And I went through that with the Beach Waterfront Trail. As you recall, for members that were here at that time, we had petitions from the beach community that said, you know, there's a portion of them that wanted it, thought it would do good things for the neighbourhood and would do good things for the city, and there were a portion of people who, who were against it. And, and we're forced to make, under those trying circumstances, very tough decisions, especially when we have a split. As you know, for me, I've criticized this process, and certainly the project, from the perspective of that no one really came into this term with a mandate to, to go forward with this project. And— Hold on. Thank you.
Thanks, Dad.
My relatives are here.
Thanks, Mom.
Sorry, Gabe. So I, so, you know, I've been very clear in terms of, I still think that, you know, putting this to a referendum is, is the best route to take, because I think we get a clear and concise opportunity to view where the community is. But I know that that's not in the cards, in terms of where council sits. We know the interpretation that we received in terms of the two-thirds majority, and, and I'm certainly willing, as I said from day one, once that was rendered, to, to live with that decision. Those are procedural rules, and I certainly don't discount it. And I didn't take part in the poll that was conducted recently, and I know there's been a lot of criticisms and a lot of support for the poll, depending on what side of the equation you're on, in terms of whether or not it was an accurate poll. I, I don't dispute the fact that the poll that was taken was a very accurate one. It's a national firm that's done polling in other areas. I think we would all agree that polling, to some extent, has, has been called into question of late, in terms of what we've seen with our own elections here in Canada and Ontario, and certainly those that have occurred in the US of late. But I think what the poll confirms, and anyone who has lived through the last, I would say, through the last election up until today, I think what the poll confirms, and, and the correspondences that we receive, and the phone calls we receive, and we've all informally met over the last number of weeks, what it confirms is that we have a divided and split community. And, and that's never a good thing. I think it's, I think it's important that we've certainly heightened the level of civic engagement related to this project. It's not often that for GIC meetings, or committee meetings, or council meetings, that we have a full audience in attendance following what's happening at City Hall. And it's certainly been problematic for the province and the feds, and even municipal levels, for us to get people engaged. So I, irrespective of where you sit in terms of the LRT, whether you're for or against it, I, I think it's been a victory in a sense, for as much as it's caused some great grief for many of us, in terms of the two, and the, the emails, the calls, and the delegation, certainly, we had very long meetings. I think it's been a great victory for all of us that we have heightened the level of municipal civic engagement in our building here at City Hall over the last number of years on this issue. So, no winners and no losers in that regard. I think the fact that we have people talking about how important issues are to their community, whether it's their own street, their neighbourhood, or the city as a whole, I think we've done well in that regard. And I know we've been criticized of late in terms of not making decisions. We've made decisions all along, and we'll continue to make decisions, and, and those criticisms are certainly valid, I think, maybe in some quarters, but I would say that the fact that we have people here today helping us along the way is a good thing. I, I want to thank certainly those people who've come out to the rally. I didn't attend the rally. I want to thank people who've come out pro and con here to the meetings that we've had in terms of delegations. And we've been inundated with phone calls, we've been inundated with emails, and, you know, all of us are in the community in our personal lives, and so whether you're getting your haircut, you're going to the grocery store, or whether you're picking up your dry cleaning, you're not escaping this issue anywhere. Unless you're sitting in your basement watching TV and your family's not talking about it, you're hearing about LRT everywhere. For good or bad. But at the end of the day, we have a split community, and we have a split council. And it has an effect on all of us as individuals, and I think lost in, in much of what's gone on, and I think Andrew referenced this a little bit in his column recently, and I've had a conversation, more than one, with every single person around this table in terms of what's gone on over the last year and a half. And it is a very trying and taxing experience on us all as individuals. And again, irrespective of your position, people are losing sleep over it, people aren't eating over it, you know, I can hear somebody playing violins, I'm certain, in the background here, in terms of, well, poor them, but we asked for this job, we signed up for it, and we're forced to make these tough decisions. But I know that this has been a very trying and taxing experience on all of us. And, and so I'm certainly cognizant of wherever this goes, between now and the provincial election, and between now and our next election, that it is taking a toll on my council colleagues, all of whom I, I consider friends. And I say that in the greatest of respect to everyone around the table. And it's not often that we can get unanimity around this table. I don't expect unanimity. No one in the community expects us to be Stepford councillors, where we all just get in line once an issue comes up. And I respect the fact that everyone has the ability through these discussions, and the right to disagree and to criticize, constructively criticize, issues that, that are in front of us. I've noticed with that split community and that split council that the emotions run high during our debates, and we sometimes lose, you know, the decorum that we often look for when it comes to making decisions. We, we noticed that at our last meeting, where things get emotional, and things, again, people get tired after marathon meetings, and things can get out of control. It doesn't help us through the decision-making process. And I'm sorry for going on, Mr. Mayor. I traditionally don't speak very long, but I have, I have, I just want to get this off my chest.
This is, this is the time that everyone gets to speak whatever they want to say.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate your comment.
And so, I know that emotions run high, and I, and I know that things get testy, and that affects the relationship we have between each other, and it affects committee work. And I've been in committees where, you know, people have said, "Well, I'm not supporting that initiative," unrelated to LRT, "and I'm not supporting that, that project, and I'm not supporting that policy," because he or she is on the other side of this issue. And, and that doesn't help us at all. Again, irrespective of what side of the equation you're on, it doesn't help us move issues forward. Thankfully, you've all been kind enough, you haven't applied that to me yet, but it's just a matter of time, I'm, I'm certain. And, and so, you know, we've, we've been through marathon meetings, we had an issue last marathon meeting, and we had one two meetings ago. My best friend here was ready to knock my block off, and at 11 o'clock at night, I was trying to think of someone bigger than him, who I could call down here to help me in a situation where I thought I needed—
Would not have helped.
We've got your back.
I couldn't think of anyone who was bigger than him.
We've got your back.
So I, I say that, you know, it's sort of tongue-in-cheek, but, you know, this has become a very personal issue for all of us, and, and because we have split wards, and, again, back to that poll, you know, you can dispute the findings of the poll, but we all recognize that the community is split. I don't care where, what area of the, the city you represent, whether you want to say that it's a 60/40 split, whether you want to say it's 65/35, whether you want to say it's 50/50, every area of this community has almost a different opinion, neighbourhood by neighbourhood, street by street, house by house. And so that certainly doesn't make the decision-making process any easier. And for as, as much as we're elected as individuals to this table, when we arrive at City Hall, the community expects that we're gonna act as a team. And right now, to be very blunt, we have a divided locker room. And there's a lot of furrowed brows that are, that were, our eyes are cast to the coach, and, and we're, we're not happy about the situation. And I can say with great confidence that our council works best when we act as a team. And I can give— Thank you for that, Mark. And, and I can give you a number of examples. When we come together as a group, we find ways to accomplish great things in our community. And that would apply to, I would say, the last five or six budgets that we've passed. We've passed some of the lowest tax increases in the, in the province, and because of that, we're a more affordable city, and we're more competitive for it. We are on the verge tonight of passing our housing strategy, which will help hundreds, if not thousands, of people in this community, and I think goes beyond where the feds and the province are. We have resolved round one of area rating, we have resolved our waste issues, and I just say that in the context of the fact that we have done tremendous things when we act as a group. And many of those items I just rhymed off, we, we were unanimous. I mean, we were collectively around the table, every single person bought into the fact that on those issues, we were doing good things. But I, I come back to the split, and, and for me, the problem with the project, where we sit right now, is that this political pendulum that is the LRT keeps swinging wildly back and forth. And so, think back to the election, I think we probably still had a split community, there were three mayoral candidates that had different opinions, we went through that, we all took opinions, went to the door-to-door. The announcement came, and then there were opinions that were provided at that point in time, and then there've been steps, baby steps through the process to get us to where we are today. And this issue has swung back and forth. And, and if I was to, you know, we all know where we were last Wednesday. I mean, we went from starting at the announcement with vast majority of support for this project, although we maybe hadn't checked in with council, it didn't seem like anything was awry with moving forward with this. Get us to last week, and had we voted on this last Wednesday, and I know there were credits that we didn't make a decision, this project would have failed nine to six. We all know where the votes were. So had we, at 11 o'clock, decided not to punt this to council, this project would have lost, and we'd be sitting here tonight with a negative recommendation in front of us, and we'd be scrambling to understand where we're going next. Does it, does the delay of the EA mean that this project is alive but on life support? Does the defeat of the EA at GIC mean that we are now searching for a Plan B, as I think many people were talking about? Or something different? And, and so, for me, when the political pendulum swings wildly, we run into problems. We run into problems in terms of how we operate, we run into problems in terms of just general governance, and, and if I point to Toronto as an example, where we watch the political pendulum swing from side to side, Mayor Miller to Rob Ford. Look at what happened in the United States. Barack Obama to Donald Trump. And so, for me, when, when those things happen, and it's happening right now with us, it's problematic. There, there are issues attached to that, there are short, medium, and long-term issues that come about as a result of that, and no one benefits. And we see wild swings in policy, we see wild swings in decisions, and I think you and others have characterized it in the media of late, that, you know, this project's on life support, we're doing everything we can to keep it going forward, and we have a, we have a, a group in the community who'd like to see something different. And, and so that is, that's problematic. So as I look forward, in terms of where we're going next, I see that political pendulum still swinging wildly. And whether it was gonna pass last week in terms of being defeated nine to six, or whether tonight, as some people would guess, it might be supported nine to six, or eight to seven, we still see the project in a very precarious position. And, and if that project is defeated, whether it's now or next June, we see certainly residents who are supporting it ramping up the discussion, and trying to find ways and means in which to bring it back. We find the, we find people involved in the provincial process trying to make it a provincial issue, which it most certainly will be, trying to find ways and means in which to affect the decision-making process. No one anticipates premier win being our next premier, so it boils down to Mr. Brown and certainly Ms. Horvath. I mean, stranger things have happened in politics, but, you know, if I was a betting man, I would suggest that someone else is gonna be premier. And so that, that show, whatever that show looks like between now and then, makes that political pendulum here at the civic, civic level, municipal level, swing all that much more wildly. And, and everyone waits all the while for that, sort of that Oscar announcement, that, that moment where they open the envelope and say, "What is the cost of this project? What is the capital cost? What are the operating—?" What are the operating costs? What are some of the issues and answers that we're looking for?" And that's kind of where we're left guessing right now. And all the while, between now and then, the front page of the newspaper looks less like a daily and more like a cover of Mad Magazine. We've seen that between the announcement and today, we've seen that in the last week. No one's talking about anything else, even though there are other things going on, no one's talking about anything else except for LRT. So I'm interested certainly in, my style has been here to sort of build things up rather than take them down. And I say that in the context of, you know, we're all here to try to solve problems, and irrespective of where you, the issue with LRT, we all want this community to benefit. And we can all talk about ways and means in which to get there, whether it's LRT, whether it's BRT, whether it's an investment in our infrastructure. Our rapid-ready plan that we all supported, I think, if there's anything where we have unanimous support around this table right now, is that we all supported rapid-ready, that we all wanted to improve transit, and we wanted to see good things come from transit investments. We're passing a federal investment tonight for transit, and hopefully that will go a long way to help us. Our rapid-ready plan, Mr. Mayor, as you know, will require significant investments from around this table. And it won't happen with an eight-seven council, it won't happen with a nine-six council, you know, insert councillor Pursutie here, whatever his vote is, add a digit one way or the other, and we fail. And I would say that this project doesn't continue much further beyond 218 if we don't resolve area rating for transit. That's a given irrespective of what, again, what side of the debate you're on. And I know we're holding it off, and there are strategic reasons to do that, but that doesn't resolve itself with the split that we have on council or the split in the community. People will ramp it up one way or the other, that we're paying too much and we're not going to get through this. And I don't think, having been here as long as I have been, that there's any way that we resolve that issue with a split council, it just doesn't happen. We resolved round one unanimously, this time not going to happen in the context of everything else that's happening us around with LRT. And I want to be very constructively critical of some of the comments that have been made lately as it relates to cost. This is not a cost-neutral initiative. Again, irrespective of whether you support this or not, there are immediate costs that come with LRT. And we will collectively, whether it's us in 218 or other people sitting around this table in 19 and beyond, we will not be able to resolve the cost pressures that will come with this project or BRT, if someone has, if someone thinks that we have support for BRT, we will not be able to resolve those issues without majority support and consensus around this table. And I would say right now, back to the split, that we don't have that, and we're nowhere near being in a position to resolve that issue. We also know what's coming, again, and I'm getting to the finish line here, we also know what's coming with the, that has come with other issues, other LRT projects, other transit projects. Construction process will bring lawsuits, we know that. That's happened in Toronto, happened in KW, it's going to happen here. We know that there will be special requests from BIAs, I've heard informally from some of my council colleagues, there will be special consideration or requests coming from BIAs in terms of providing help, and businesses' associations who are looking for some assistance through the construction process, they were going, they're going to lose revenues as it relates to the parking sharing agreement that we have. And we know that residents are going to be displaced in every ward. We won't be able to deal with those projects and those pressures unless we have the majority of support on council, and we won't be able to do that nine to six, we won't be able to do that eight to seven, it'll take much more than that. And so, what I'm saying here tonight, Mr. Mayor, is that, and I haven't discussed this certainly with anyone around the table, that I'm willing to work with people to get us through these issues. Once the EA passes tonight, we're going to be in a position where we're going to spend probably 70 to 80 million dollars. There's no turning back at that point in time. There's no turning back. I don't care what you think is going to happen when the envelope's opened, I don't care what, you know, if it was 1%, 2% on the tax roll, if it comes in $100 million over budget, once we purchase 70 to 80 million dollars worth of properties and we have all those costs under our belt, there is no turning back. And so, I'm in the position where I would like to, with all the other position, with all the other issues that I raised earlier, I'm willing to work with council on this issue. I'm willing to, instead of, I think the politically populist thing to do would be to continue to throw tomatoes at it, I still believe the vast majority of people in this community are against this project, in every ward. And people can try to suggest otherwise, that's the case. And, but I think the only way that this project moves forward without being a gong show and without affecting every other major issue we're going to deal with between now and 218, forget about what comes after, because no one knows who's going to be around this table, the only way to deal with that is that if people are trying to find ways and means in which to resolve problems associated with it. So I can work with my businesses on Queenston Road, I know that my businesses, there's not one that supports this project, to be clear. They're all cars, culture-centered, drive-throughs and grocery stores and banks and other types of operations that rely on people getting in and out with cars. I think what I would need to hear through this process over the next couple of months is that there's a willingness to provide the same flexibility with Queenston businesses as we did with James Street North, in terms of the turning restrictions, in terms of some of the problems associated with the access issues. I think that we are all swimming against the stream when it deals, when we deal with the residential community. But I think, again, by and large, when this passes tonight, we're at the point of no return. And I know where the votes are right now, and we can continue to hope for the Hail Mary from the province, they're not changing that. And we continue to hope that Patrick Brown's elected, he's going to provide us a check, those political promises might be made at some point in time, whether they're delivered on, I don't know if that's the case. So I'm certainly willing to, as I have in the past, work with my colleagues on this issue. I think it's important, and we can't discount the fact that there are people who want to continue to oppose this, and I respect that, and I still believe that there are better options and alternatives on the table than the one that we have in front of us. But where we are in the process, I'm willing to work with my colleagues, as I have, on bigger issues in the past, and we need people like councillor Conley and certainly councillor Pearson. You know, they know where Stony Creek's at, and councillor Conley has that tell-it-like-it-is style and has a lot of business experience. Councillor Pearson, someone who takes transit all the time, has represented her area for a long time. We need, you know, we need people like our Stony Creek councillors to help us with these issues, and there are going to be a lot of them. And I look at councillor Johnson and all the good things that she does with her area, and she knows where the community is on this, it's not, it's not an easy decision. And I don't, I've never criticized, to be clear, just to make it clear, I've never criticized anyone on the other side for taking the position they have, I've always been critical of the issue. And so I don't discount any of the issues and the support that my colleagues to the left of me, the gentlemen here to the left of me, provide because they're representing their constituents. Councillor Ferguson and I certainly are almost always on the same page when it comes to financial stuff, and I'm not going to make my way around the table, because it'll take much longer than, I've already been given latitude and flexibility to say what I had to say, but I think almost to a person, I can point to everyone and say that they have something to offer in terms of moving this forward. If we don't move it forward, and I want to, I want to talk about June very quickly, if we're in the same position in June, this is a bigger gong show than it is right now. Because we're going to have provincial candidates in the mix, we'll have municipal candidates in the mix, and we'll most likely have some information in hand that makes us feel uncomfortable once that bid process makes its way across the finish line. So all I'm asking is that my colleagues, again, irrespective of how you came into the meeting tonight, keep an open mind in terms of where they're going, how we move this project forward. I'm not going to stop being critical of it, and, but I want to help with the process in terms of the budget, I want to help in terms of all the things that are on the horizon. And it's not an easy decision, irrespective of how any of us vote tonight, we have a half of our ward, give or take some, who are not going to be happy with the decision. But I think it's incumbent upon us to try to make the best of, depending on how you look at it, a bad situation, and try to make it right so that no one's disadvantaged through this process. So I will be supporting the EA tonight.
Okay, folks, thank you very much. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, boy, what a difference a week makes. And I don't intend to be nearly as elegant or as profound as councillor Collins was, but I do want to congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, in one week, and my MPP, Ted Meagan, for so quickly turning around the letter we received today from the Ministry of Transport. I think that put comfort to some of my colleagues, that we went back to what we originally said we wanted, and it does make sense that you go from one town to the other, and East Gate does seem like a better spot to end it than the Queenston traffic service. So congratulations to you and Ted for getting this letter done. And just one question on the letter, though, and I'd like to direct it to Metrolinks, and I see Andrew Greif is here tonight, I wonder if you could just step up to a microphone, Andrew, because I just want to get clarity, I think I know the answer, but I want to get clarity publicly on, the last paragraph of the letter, it states that "this would be contingent upon Hamilton City Council support." And I interpret that to mean support by approving this resolution, resolution to take at East Gate Square and submitting the EA, moving the EA process forward. It does not mean you're looking for financial support from the city of Hamilton. To you, Mr. Mayor, to Andrew, is that, have I interpreted that correctly?
Andrew?
Through the mayor, the councillor is correct. What our understanding is the ministry is looking for, from council, is support to move forward with the EA process, and our direction is to work with the city to deliver the project within the approved project budget.
Okay, I appreciate that, because I know there's been some doubt after some people read this letter, about what support meant, so it's support of the resolution, not support financially this time. And, Mr. Mayor, just four quick things. I think tonight is our opportunity to vote on four big macro issues. There is going to be a ton of micro issues, and no matter, whenever you take a mega project on, that'll happen, there'll be lots of issues about where stops are, whether it's against the curb, or whether there's crossovers allowed. But in my view, I always come back to the four big macro issues. You know, as a person who spent his professional career as a businessman, we cannot turn down a $1 billion investment in our community, that as a driving force, as a macro issue. We cannot turn down 2,500 new jobs, and all the experts agree with a $1 billion investment, that's the yield in jobs. We cannot, we need to reform our city. And I saw this personally when I visited Charlotte, Phoenix, Portland, and Calgary, I saw the economic uplift. And as I keep telling my community of Ancaster, we saw it this year in the budget process, we had a 2.1% increase citywide. And for decades, at least three, there's been a shift in assessment from the lower city that saw, as it decayed, assessed values go down. But certainly in Ancaster, I've seen it for, as long as I've been on council, it going the other way, because people aspired to move to my community, paid higher prices for property, and saw the assessed value go up. Well, in 2017, the average tax increase across the city was 2.1%. Ward one and Ward two were in the 4.5% range because of the growth of assessment. Now, it's not just because of LRT, the negotiation has something to do with it, and of course, people, Toronto finding Hamilton, but what I hear out there from the investment community, they're buying up property because we approved the light rail transit, which means we can now expand vertically instead of horizontally, we no longer have to go into farm fields, and respect the green belt, we'll expand vertically, and we heard Mr. Thorpe last week say that the bylaw is now approved, that we can go to significantly higher structures now, particularly condominium and commercial facilities. And so that shift in assessment we saw in 2017 will grow exponentially, as we saw in these other cities, as we put this advanced form of transit in place. And so, you know, this will carry us into the, into the next century. We'll be a progressive city, we've already turned the corner on being a progressive city, but this will kick-start it even further. So those four reasons, billion-dollar investment, 2,000, 2,500 jobs, reform our city, and economic uplift, are the four macro issues that we've got to get behind us tonight. And I fully accept, we're going to be having a ton of debate, the media's going to beat this up for some decisions we made on all these micro issues, but we've got to get the macro behind us tonight, so I'm fully supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just for all of your reference, I have councillor Partridge, then Vanderbeek, Marula, Farr, Conley, Whitehead, and myself. Councillor Partridge.
Okay, thank you, and I think councillor Skelly also had her hand up. I want to thank the previous speakers, because, I mean, certainly, it's absolutely correct, we are a divided city and we are a divided council. And even though the vote appears to, it will pass tonight, there's no question about that, I have not been happy with the type of discourse that has been going on around not just this table, but in our community, particularly the emails and the vitriol of comments on social media, which do not reflect the city that I love and that I am proud to represent around this table. So that's one message that I think needs to be carried out to our broader city. We need to be respectful of each other, folks, regardless of where you are on this, on not only this subject, but on anything. We're a passionate people in Hamilton, we're gutsy, we like to be opinionated, and we fight hard for our city, and there's nothing wrong with that. But we need to do it in a respectful way, and in an open way to listen to what each other has to say. Because regardless of where you are, what you have to say is important. And I want to thank everyone for sending the emails, the letters, and by and large, it was against the project, and I'm with councillor Collins on that, and it wasn't just my ward, it's right across the city. But it's very, very important that we do listen to each other, so I want to thank you all very, very much. But I do have a few things, Mr. Mayor, that I do want to say. Because I firmly believe that the goal of any municipality should be to provide affordable, efficient, and convenient transit services that connects all areas of our city and grows ridership. In 2013, council approved the Rapid Ready Transit Report with a clear plan unanimously to go forward for Hamilton to achieve all of its recommendations within that plan. It was to improve our HSR connectivity, implement bus rapid transit to grow ridership, to then, when the numbers were there, a future LRT would complete the plan. And this is especially true when it comes to providing transit to the high residential growth areas across our city, such as the mountain, East Hamilton areas, and not to mention the business parks throughout our great city. We have them in Ancaster, Stony Creek, again, East Hamilton, Stony Creek QEW area, where there's very inadequate transit to connect people to their jobs, and in Flamro, I now have four business parks, and we are looking to enhance our transit connectivity there. But for a successful transit service, we must connect people to opportunities for employment and for their jobs. The LRT on an 11-kilometer track from McMaster to the Delta to East Gate, wherever it ends up, it does not do that for the broader city. And I don't believe it's the best transit solution for Hamilton, I believe it needs to be much more. solution for Hamilton. I believe it needs to be much more. At minimum, we need to consider bus rapid transit or a mixture of higher-order transit. We need to ramp up the implementation of our blast network, which, again, we unanimously supported. We don't unanimously support this project, but we did those two documents. And I believe that until we have a transit system that connects all the areas of this city, we just don't have the numbers for LRT. We just don't. But that leads me to what concerns me the most. It is the unknown actual cost of the LRT and what that impact will be for Hamilton taxpayers going forward. We know there is a $1 billion capital investment, a commitment from the province to MetroLinks to build the LRT. But we do not know what the actual costs to the Hamilton taxpayers are going to be going forward. And there will be capital costs that will be the responsibility of the city to pay, which means our taxpayers. And no one can even confirm what the basic ridership fee is going to be. We've asked that question. I keep hearing it's going to be similar to the current HSR. We don't know that for sure. How do we know that it's going to be affordable for those who really need the transit most, especially along the King Line, the students, the teens, the seniors, single parents, minimum wage earners? We don't know. And I have a tough time, because who agrees to buy anything these days without knowing what your costs are going to be? And we keep hearing that we're going to find out what that is in the spring of 2018, but as councillor Collins correctly said, that's going to be too late. And in my opinion, it is irresponsible for us to commit our taxpayers to any project without knowing the costs upfront. And we will not know these costs, as I said, until the operating agreement is in front of us. MetroLinks has clearly stated there will be a private third-party operator to design, build, finance, operate, and maintain the LRT system, including staffing, fare box, light rail vehicles, all operations. The HSR union may be shut out of that process, and I think we need to remember that, because our employees are very important to us. They are hugely important to the city, especially our unions. Our union leaders stood here last week, expecting the LRT MetroLinks project would create local union jobs. They stood right here. Thousands of jobs would be created. But the reality is, folks, that it may be a non-union international consortium that builds and operates and finances with non-union jobs. We don't know that. We don't know that until we get into the weeds on this. And the city will not have any say, because it is a MetroLinks project. So the LRT is not the silver bullet that will end Hamilton's transit issues. Council will go down this road by approving the CEAD addendum. But without further discussion on improving our overall transit system, we will still be expected to pour millions of dollars into improving HSR and connecting to all areas of the city, which is exactly what we should be negotiating right now. This is a wonderful opportunity for us to have that billion dollars. And, you know, I got to say, for those who think that there'll be an opportunity, Mr. Mayor, to exit this project later during the operating agreement discussions, I genuinely think you're misreading the tea leaves. So it is my hope that we could form a working group of council to negotiate a better deal with the province, or at minimum, to work together to ensure that this transit system can be everything that the city of Hamilton needs. And if you'll come back to me after, I do have a motion that I'd like to put forward on that, and I'll just test the waters. I've not negotiated or brought it forward to anybody around this table, but it is something that I'd like to have the opportunity to speak to, sir. Because we need to pull everyone on council together to work on this. And I don't believe for a minute that the province, the premier, or our ministers would punitively walk away with that $1 billion commitment without being open for a further discussion, an ongoing discussion for what's the best for our city. Because I believe in our province, and I believe that our ministers genuinely want to work with this council for what is best for our municipality and for regional transit connectivity to the go right across. So I cannot support moving forward with the EA addendum as it is right now. I understand it will pass, and I will commit to working with people, but I can't in good conscience put my vote behind this. The Rapid Ready and the 10-year local transit strategy have already been approved by council. They've been submitted to MetroLinks. All that we need is to further negotiate, to look at what funding could be put towards these well-thought-out transit solutions. And I'll say it again, folks, we unanimously supported around this table. This, as councillor Collins said, we are not all together on this project. And that needs to happen at some point in time, whatever this could look like going forward. So those are my comments, but I would appreciate if you would come back to me, Mr. Mayor, when we deal with this issue.
For what?
I do have a motion I'd like to bring forward after we deal with this.
After we approve this?
After we deal with this motion, please.
Thank you. Councillor Vanderbeek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we all recognize that the weight of this decision that we make tonight, ostensibly, it's about whether or not to send an EA addendum to the ministry, which seems like a no-brainer. But it jumpstarts a significant expenditure going forward, and it is a weighty decision. I have to say that in my ward in Dundas, whichever decision I support, a large number of my constituents and the constituents across the city are going to object. There will be outrage, no matter what I do or how I vote tonight. I think that's just a given, and I think we all know that, and that will be true in other wards as well. There have been many allegations, and I'll call it that, of a lack of leadership, of courage, and of faith on this council. I think that true leadership requires thoughtful consideration of facts and of our hopes, and that's our responsibility. And bravery requires great courage, great courage, often to make the unpopular decision. Risks should be measured, not ignored, and faith is built on the foundation of facts, of knowledge, of experience, and of mostly trust. And when those things come together, you see leadership. And during the past election, I was very clear, LRT was not a priority for me. Good transit was, and still is, and always will be. BRT would be less permanent, more flexible, quicker and cheaper to implement. It might also be less efficient and more costly to operate in the long term, especially when you compare it to LRT with 100% provincial capital funding. That billion dollars would cover most of our corporate risk, no municipal debt or financing costs. It's $22 million in KW every year on the levy, just to pay their financing and their financing costs. We'd have no insurance to pay and no future capital investment expense for 30 years on that LRT line. That 100% capital funding would give us an opportunity to implement a piece of our Rapid Ready Plan that we might never otherwise build. That would come with risks, no doubt, and costs, but also opportunities. The question to be answered here today is whether that billion dollars is a gift or a burden. We also have to think of the perception that we leave with others about what this city is and what it can be. We need to watch the message that we send to investors, to our youth, and to our millennials. This is a city in recovery mode, and in my lifetime, I've watched it flounder and fail, and finally start to rebuild. We've come a long way. However, to do the right thing, we really need to invest in our traditional bus transit and our Rapid Ready Plan, to create a more robust system that will build ridership numbers and provide flexibility and connectivity. And if we do decide, as it seems we will tonight, to build the LRT, we have five to seven years to do that. We need the plan that shows us that buses will be deployed where they will have the most impact, where they'll get people to work, connect them to other places within the city and beyond. Transit is meant to move people and to give people an option to get out of their car. There's no doubt about that. And that's our responsibility. We are the only ones who can make the difference here. It's high time we prioritized our spending in those areas, and we're the only ones who can do that. Should it go to Eastgate? Of course. And thanks to the province, it looks like it will. Someone I know and love told me once that if you're going to err, it's always best to err on the side of progress. At this point, I think the provincial investment is worth the risk of traffic snarls, which will need sorting out, of the fear that a newer technology might make this obsolete, that people may not use it, that our taxes might escalate because operating might be too expensive. But we will have some control over that, and we have to exercise that control. So in closing, I am sincerely sorry to disappoint some of my constituents. Those who trust me know that I spent many, many hours deliberating this. I spoke to many people. I researched. I investigated. I asked many, many questions. It was a seriously difficult decision for me. I listen, I consider, and I do my homework. I get up every day, and I set out to do the best job I can do for Dundas and for this city as a whole. I want to say that I have become convinced that this is not a terrible risk that we thought it might be, but an opportunity not to be wasted. I want to thank everyone, everyone who gave me their time. Thank you. I want to thank everyone who gave me their time and their input and their patience. I'll be supporting that recommendation to send the EA on. Thank you.
Councillor Marula, thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And let me start off by saying, I think the tone in which this debate has started off with my good friend Chad Collins, I think, and his very thorough appreciation of the facts that are before us, as a governing body of a half-a-million people, needs to not only be recognized but applauded quite significantly. Having said that, I appreciate those that are opposed, that are in favor, but I mostly appreciate those that are engaged in this particular issue. And I can assure you that I've actually, I've lost sleep over this issue over the last few weeks, months. And I have, I've lost sleep over this issue for a number of reasons. Firstly, it's very uncommon for me to be on the opposite side of my best friend Chad Collins, and I'll be quite frank. And that is a tough scenario from a personal perspective. But also Tom Jackson, Terry Whitehead, Donna Skelly, who I've known for years, Jason Farr, who's always been on our side, but he always gives me some sort of pain every once in a while. But also Doug Conley and others, who I have the greatest of respect for and think, you know, at the end of the day, why does it have to come to this? And just like during the Trump campaign, everyone thought he wasn't going to be elected. And when I spoke to people about why they supported him, I looked at them with a great deal of angst and wondered what thought process would lead to that conclusion. And the same could be said with my good friends here on council about why they wouldn't support LRT, based on the facts that I understood them to be. Not to dismiss what councillor Partridge is saying, because I think we need to acknowledge that with the whole social media movement and the angst and the comments on, even on the newspaper, on the internet, people are just very, very angry, and they're not happy unless they're miserable, so they try to create their own misery in many ways. And we're here elected, and I can say with a great deal of confidence that everyone around this table is elected to do what is in the best interest of the city, and I have no doubt about that. And I applaud each and every one of them. And I know people on the outside looking in think, because we have a couple of free tuna sandwiches, that we have the life of Riley, right? Hey, you know, you get a free tuna sandwich, is that? But if you ever had the wrath of thousands of people coming at you on a daily basis that we're making less than the middle managers, you know, the bottom line is that's when reality really sets in. So, you know, no one gets on council to get rich, and no one gets on council to get, in any way, be in an advantageous scenario. So let me just put this in perspective. Let's separate the personal, because I think around this table, I think we all like each other. I know I like them. But the political side of this is real. And as much as I love Chad Collins, I think the reality is that he's wrong on this issue on a number of fronts. And I'll explain why. Firstly, the poll that's been referenced really is a fallacy, because I was part of that poll. And when I brought forward my questions, they were vetoed. They weren't incorporated. So the question was really simple. When you ask an individual in this town, and I've done so for two years, "Do you support LRT?", the vast majority would say, "No", because they frankly don't know what LRT actually means. They think we're throwing a train and a train track on the existing infrastructure from McMaster to the Queenston Traffic Circle to basically function as a public transit system. So, you know what, frankly, I think a lot of us would not even support that based on those conditions. But having said that, when I then say to them, "Do you understand what LRT actually means?", they don't, and I elaborate. Then I ask them, "Do you understand that the blast system, do you know what the blast system is?" And universally, I've not had one resident say to me, in literally, I would say thousands, whether it be at the gym or the grocery store, or whatever, "Do you know what the blast system is?" Absolutely not. Well, the blast system is a city-wide transportation network, and the B-line is just one section of the entire blast line that incorporates everything from Upper Stony Creek to Ancaster, to Centre Mall, to Dundas, to McMaster, to 50 Road in Wynona. And I happened to go to a gym with a lot of Stony Creek residents, and none of them were aware of those two issues. And none of them were in favor until they became aware of those two issues. So I say to you, "Take that poll and shove it, because it means nothing." In a sense. And I was part of that poll, so I can say that. So I'm not offending anyone. I actually contributed to it. Because it doesn't contribute to the actual reality of the issue. And the reality of the issue is that most people don't realize that we have, 80% of this project is related to infrastructure renewal. That means water lines, sewers, hydro, gas, sidewalks, roads, and it incorporates everything that we, as a city telecommunications, need. So when you say to them, "Do you support LRT?", they think it's public transit. And listen, I was born and raised in this city. I know public transit. It's not a cruel thing in this city. It's just not. I remember as a kid hiding from bus stops to avoid my friends seeing me taking a bus, because I couldn't wait to get my license and get a car. That still exists. That still exists. That's part of still Hamilton, the old Hamilton culture. But we have a new culture that's being developed. Not only a new culture, but a new necessity. So we need to focus in on what the reality is. The reality is, I'm not going to make a reference to that poll, because frankly, I think there's a lot of good news for those that are in favor of it. And when you look at, when you look at the numbers and you break down the correlating numbers, it's actually in our best interest, because nobody gets 50 press one. And they, and they'd support that not knowing about the BLAST system and the infrastructure renewal. So I then move on, and I want to focus in on a couple of other things. When I was first elected, I was, I'm 2000, everyone told me, and I think Andrew Dreschel wrote a column, saying that I was going to be faced with this incredible and surmonable fact that I'm up against this incumbent known as Mr. Dave Wilson. God bless him, I think the world of him, and I hope he's doing well. And it was one of those situations where they said, you know, here's this punk that's coming up against this incumbent, the incumbent supports the expressway, this punk Marula supports the expressway, he'll never get elected. They dismissed me. And I kind of liked the fact they did. Because history has proven that although people in my area, and they were vastly opposed to it, were opposed to the expressway, they were given a certain bill of goods that they bought into, not recognizing the benefits that they're now experiencing, particularly the Renaissance and the opening of that highway to Toronto and all the GTA movement going on. Because had we not built that, what would we be seeing today? Is that movement going to Branford, because the 403 was built. And the traffic in the East End, I brought Kennonworth Avenue south down to 40 kilometers, first main artery in the entire city, to be done 40 kilometers an hour, bringing it to a complete street now, livable. I can have a street hockey game at any given time.
Yes, you can legally.
Why? Because of that expressway. And legally as well. Thanks, councillor Green. So there have been significant benefits, not only from a quality of life significance in the East End, but also economic development and all of the influx of Trontonians moving in, which is increasing assessment values, which is increasing excitement about this city, and everything that's good about this city. So I take that poll, and I think, you know what? It's our job to take that information and explain to people why they should be supporting it. Not follow based on polls, but lead based on being leaders and elected to lead. And that's what I take pride in. So I look at what's before us, and I look at the opportunities that exist, and I say, what are the facts, and basically what are people seeing as fiction? And this is an email that I've sent out to the vast majority of those that are opposed, and I'm going to read it today. Because I can assure you that out of the literally thousands of people I sent it to, I probably received two rebuttals. And even within those rebuttals, they never really had a rebuttal based on the facts of the body of this email. They thought it was a great, great cause, but I still don't support the LRT. So in an attempt to separate fact from fiction on the LRT project, we need to focus on the priorities of the LRT infrastructure renewal. My support for LRT is about what we need: new sewers, water lines, hydro, cable, roads, sidewalks, bridges, gas lines, and assessment goals for thousands of great paying jobs for five years and beyond. Public transit has never been the main purpose of the project, from my perspective. It would be a betrayal to you and all Hamiltonians to not support the renewal this project brings at the expense of the province of Ontario, particularly in the face of a $3 billion infrastructure deficit crisis, and the fact this project brings hundreds of millions of dollars in infrastructure renewal, or eighty percent. Eighty percent of the entire construction budget is related to the LRT budget. Ergo, mitigating the infrastructure deficit crisis in Hamilton. At this point, I can provide a picture of the work included, minus all of the utilities, meaning the gas, the hydro, the cable, and that is sidewalks, roads, and light standards will be replaced along the corridor as part of this project, paid for by MetroLinks. There are about 44 lane kilometers of roadway within the LRT corridor. There is about 10 kilometers of underground infrastructure sewer water that would be renewed through this project. MetroLinks will be replacing the Longwood Road Bridge over the 403 as part of the project, a bridge that is 62 years old. The LRT project requires an operations, maintenance, and storage facility at the site of Frid Street and Chatham Street. So this project has unlocked some mini projects the city was working on, including MetroLinks will build the Frid Street extension from Longwood Road to Chatham Street, which has been planned since 2006 through the Kirkendale Traffic Management Plan. An environmental assessment was completed in 2008, but the city was unable to proceed due to costs, land acquisition. The opportunity for new development that would now be possible is possible because of this. So I look at that, but I look at the most recent storm event, and I look at the infrastructure renewal, and Gary Moore in his, in his email today, and I'm not going to read the entire report, but clearly illustrates everything that I just said, coupled with the fact of increased capacity to deal with the flooding issue. As you can recall, when I was first elected, when we had a storm event, as we did the other day, I would have nearly 3,000 households affected. 3,000, and that's no word of a lie. Look at the archives. Thousands of people would have feces floating in their basement because of the lack of infrastructure. I'm proud to say that today, over that storm event, because I was a loud mouth prick, that I was able to bring that, well, I'm going to say it the last, at the time, if you look back historically...
I'm not arguing with your point, just the language could be better.
Okay. Thank you. But that's what people called me. That's what people called me. So I'm just, I'm just giving you what they were calling.
We don't need to share it here. Keep that in the background.
You know, I had, I had a lot said about me, and if you want me to take all the archives out in print even, I will. But the reality is today, that storm event produced zero basement flooding. So call me what you will. Call me what you want. I got the job done. And what we have before us today is another opportunity, because there are those that talk and there are those that do, and there are times when we have to actually talk the talk and walk the walk. And in this particular case, I must say that I'm prepared to do that. And I must also say that historically speaking, if you look at this city, amalgamation, the Red Hill Valley Expressway, which I still have scars over that as well, the stadium, which I warned everyone about, and you're still paying the consequences, the LRT, which I'm fully supportive of, and the flooding crisis. So, see, there are those that talk without proven track records, and there are those that do with proven track records. And I can assure you that my proven track record speaks volumes, because on this front, this is probably one of those issues that when we look back from a legacy perspective, whether it be 10, 15, 20, 50 years from now, we'll be looking back and saying, we are there, we're in a position where he who hesitates is lost, and we lost this incredible opportunity, or he who took action gained, and the city is prospering because of it. And I know from the facts that are before us and from the experts that have, that have stated their fact, that we're in a position right now where this is a complex development. It's a back-to-basics development. It's related to not only the infrastructure, but public transit, environmental, financial, social, infrastructure. And as I mentioned, 80% of the construction budget is related to infrastructure. So when we're dealing with a $3 billion deficit, when we're dealing with $195 million infrastructure annualized compounded deficit, there's no other alternative to choose at this point from a fiscally responsible scenario. Also, more importantly, because this is the most fascinating thing, when I talk to those from Stony Creek, Ancaster, my sisters live in Ancaster, and councillor Ferguson, who's done a great job, he's a champion on it, my parents who live on the mountain, and all my friends who live on the mountain, I say to them, listen, folks, your taxes are based on market value. So the more that the value of the inner-city properties go up, then the less you pay in taxes. For years, for, I heard it for 15 years from our suburban colleagues, about how zero never meant zero, that we were getting decreased taxes, they were getting increased taxes because of market value assessment. Well, folks, that's flipping. And this will only lead to more of that, which means a vote against the LRT is literally in a suburban area, a vote for increased taxes in a suburban area. And I can't for the life of me fathom how simple of a message that is, but yet how it's not being communicated in order to sell this project and the benefits for the benefits of this city. And that's, that's really the crux of my angst surrounding that particular issue. So, lastly, the trust factor with the province. I know a lot of people have said about the province, okay, that we haven't voted, we did vote, whatever. You know, at the end of the day, I was here from the beginning of this process. I started in 2006 when we started talking about it, till now. So I'll tell you what happened, because I lived it. And they came to us, and staff came to us and said, we have this province-wide plan that we're asking you as a city to be part of. We said unanimously, yes. Then they asked us 52 times along the way, or more, including the request for it being fully funded for that amount of money. And they gave it to us. We have cities in this province who are liberal cities, meaning, keep this in mind, like, I'm not a big fan of WINS, okay? I'm not a big fan of liberals, as you know. And, but the reality is this, here's a government that's giving a billion dollars to a city, they have one member of provincial parliament on the outskirts, in Ancaster. If something doesn't speak volumes about merit versus politics, nothing ever will. And let me tell you, I worked at Queens Park, I've been in those rooms, I know what's said, I know how they strategize, and it baffles me that they gave us that billion dollars. And I think everybody around this room is baffled by the fact they gave us the full funding, when we have cities in this province that have liberal seats that are not getting that damn money. So they're holding back right now, and they're saying, you know what, folks? And I don't blame Wynn for not coming back and committing to anything, because they want us to implode. And they're going into an election, and if I was giving advice, if I was giving advice to her, I would be saying, listen, you know, let these guys implode, because the money is sitting in the treasury, collecting interest. So that billion or 1.1 billion dollars is now probably 1.2 or 3. Let, let them, let them implode, because it's sitting there in the treasury, let them implode, and let's give it to cities that we actually can actually potentially retain some seats in the future. But they're not doing it. They're basing it on merit. And for that, I say, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Premier Wynn. Lastly, lastly, that money came from the hydro cell, and I must remind everyone that I brought forward a motion to this council. And when I first supported this, there was no talk about where the money was coming from. I still don't support the sale of Ontario Hydro, to this day, to this day. But when we supported this, the money was guaranteed to us, not based on that money. There was never a correlation, that came after the fact. So when, when I brought forward a motion that was defeated to not support that, perhaps those, so now we're in a situation, not only are we victimizing the hydro users, if you don't support what's before us, to at least retain something from that billion dollars, you're basically, in many ways, betraying everybody involved in the process. So I want to thank everyone for getting to where we are today, but I think it's important to recognize that, that we are at a crossroads, and it is unprecedented, and people aren't measured based on what they defeat or what they knock down. People are measured by what they build. And I'm prepared to build light, rapid transit, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Farr. And then councillors Connelly, Johnson, Skelly, Pearson, Green, Whitehead, and myself.
Mr. Mayor, this term, we approved a strategic plan, as you know, and that strategic plan takes us to 2025. We stood in a unanimous fashion, it was a standing recorded vote, and we celebrated a strategic plan that takes us to 2025 that includes a vision of the best place to raise a child, and thanks to councillor Jackson. We added to that vision from the previous STRAP plan, and we put the words, "And to age successfully." And we celebrated that, and we celebrated the mission that was part of our strategic plan, Mr. Mayor, that we would be cost-conscious, public service, that contributes to a healthy, safe, and prosperous community, and we do so in a sustainable manner. And our STRAP plan included our culture, and they were the five quick bullets we all came up with together, great work from our staff at all levels, in helping us assemble the culture of this city and the STRAP plan that takes us to 2025. And those bullets included having ownership on issues, having integrity, not just around this horseshoe, but amongst our 7,000-plus staff in the city of Hamilton, providing sensational service, empowering our employees, and every day we do that a little more, thanks to you, Chris. And the other bullet that stood out for me and has really resonated through this entire LRT debate is the one that speaks to courageous change. And I'm so glad that it's there, and I'm so glad that we all stood up and approved a STRAP plan that included those five culture bullets that included the courageous change, because it has seriously guided me, and it has been a little easier in Ward II to be a hashtag yes LRT-er, but it's still a challenge. And we've had references already to folks around this table waking up in the middle of the night and not getting back to sleep, and if it weren't for crime fiction novels that I'm addicted to, it'd be four o'clock every day, and I'd never get back to sleep. It can haunt you, major issues, and this is the mother of all major issues, to be sure. So in 2013, as alluded to, we said yes to LRT. We had that Part B, I remember McCarty and councillor Whitehead working on it, and it was with the proviso that we'd get 100% funding. This term, we get the announcement from the premier, she comes to Mac, the who's who's in the room, and my 11-year-old son's in the room, taking an hour off school because to me, understanding and appreciating in advance what the announcement was about, he had to be there, and it's on my screensaver with you and the premier and the transport minister and Ted McMecon in the photo still, because it was such an important day, and I wanted him to be part of it. And we got the funding. We had received 100% funding. And right after we asked for 100% funding, I don't remember where I was, but Hazel McCallum, the mayor of Mississauga, who wasn't the mayor at the time, I was sitting in for you at a Toronto summit, mayor's meeting with the premier, she thought, prior to that motion where we asked for 100% funding, that Hamilton, we were a bit nuts. Once we asked for 100% funding, she was sure we were crazy. There was no way around it. And then low and behold, here we are. So then we moved a series of motions. We, more, some of them standing recorded, others not. We said in motions of this term of council, take the money. That was a big motion. We said open an LRT office, another big motion, it got the ball rolling in a big way. We said start a LRT implementation subcommittee, and a number of us sat at that table and continued to sit at the table. We had motions from that subcommittee that were approved by council. And a big one is show us the timeline. We had a Gantt chart in our first subcommittee, and it was moved by councillor Ferguson. And it was important, because we want to meet these timelines. Tonight is all about, you know, meeting a timeline on an EA. I mean, we're really leaving it to the final minute here. But that was crucial, that's a key... But that was crucial, that's a key piece, because we've heard a lot about not getting answers, but that Gantt chart is all you have to refer to, it's a one-pager, it was asked for through a motion, it was approved through a motion, and those answers are coming. Some of the answers that we're not getting, and I'm not getting, I know they're coming, and I know when. We approved this timeline, we approved outside of the subcommittee, transit-oriented zoning, that was huge, a huge planning approval, and I believe unanimous, if not near unanimous, I think it was unanimous. So everything that we're envisioning down the line, and we're trying to sell, and with respect, especially to the economic development, in and around the stops particularly, we covered already, we've approved that this, it would take two-thirds majority to, to change that. And it speaks to the talk zoning, what we envision as a result of light rail transit on the B-line. Then we said we need an all-things-LRT-GIC, actually councillor Partridge had said it many months before we said it again, but councillor Pearson was in the chair a couple months ago, and made a very good point, and maybe one I didn't see when councillor Partridge and I worked out a modified version, a watered-down version that eventually came back anyway. And the all-things-LRT-GIC reasoning was good. We were spending an inordinate amount of time at this horseshoe, at regular GICs, and I'm as guilty as anyone, wherever and whenever possible we can insert an LRT point, we would. And the result of that would be an hour-long debate on average, and we'd get completely off-topic, and we'd go round and round and round in circles. So it actually worked out, because it was at the first all-things-LRT-GIC that an incredible thing had happened. An issue that has already seen unprecedented engagement and had for many, many, many years in this city, because LRT is not a new idea, it, as you well know, through your first term of council, was where the genesis happened. But it became, in short order, in just the last few months, the only thing this city has talked about. It has really been that huge. And I was in Whitby this morning, so it's not just in this city, people in Whitby are asking us what's going on. You, I'm sure, are dialoguing with people across the province and the country, and they're asking us what's going on. What are you doing with LRT? Certainly as your rep for FCM, I was in Winnipeg last year, I had a, a BC interior northern mayor of a town of three hundred and fifty people asking what's going on with Hamilton and LRT. Ain't no secret. But suddenly with this all-things-LRT-GIC, it was like, poof, everybody in the hammer woke up to LRT. And it seems, and I know I attest to all of you who have received them as well, they all wanted to email their councillor or the mayor. And engagement has really gone into hyperdrive, it's exploded. So this entire great big Canadian city wakes up, and I start thinking again about courageous change and the strat plan. Because while I could guess that ten to one, twenty to one of the emails alone seem to be asking that question, what are you doing? It's a billion-dollar throwaway, you're crazy, we need to move forward, some may argue the twenty to one or ten to one, but certainly the large majority of people are proponents, there's, there's no denying, denying that. And I keep thinking about the courageous change for those who still ask questions, and I've kept that in the front of my brain whenever I'm in the barber shop, and yes, I take my son there. To your barber.
Yes.
Whenever I'm in the grocery store, wherever I am, Ward Two particularly, but throughout this city, it's a lot of hockey rinks, and a lot of fields, and it's all LRT. And I try to share what courageous change means to us with the person or the Hamiltonian that has. And it seems to work. Sometimes it doesn't, but I talk about the future, so, and that's what, that's what we're doing here. So turning back to that strat plan, there's lots of priorities that, that are included right after the vision and the mission and the culture, but the first one on the list is engaging our citizens. And I am so proud, Mr. Mayor, to be a Hamiltonian, and thank all of you, you represent thousands that have come before us, and I know many of you have spoken to us, we've had over a hundred in the last two meetings, over twenty-six hours of meetings in two meetings, and a lot of you have came, come back here tonight to see what's what and what will go down, because it's important to you and your families too. So thank you so much for being here tonight and for engaging with us. We, we, we have blown that whole engagement piece in the strat plan out of the water. It's beyond, I'm sure, our city manager's expectations, our senior management's expectations, certainly amongst all of us. It's been a very powerful voice, one way or the other, on this particular file. Particularly, I'd like to thank some people, you, Mr. Mayor, first and foremost, you've been steadfast, you've been very calm throughout. I noticed the one meeting, though, for about an hour, you had a stress ball. I should, you should tell me where you bought that. I appreciate that, I, I don't know whether it's squash or a tennis or, or it's a special stress ball, but it works for you. And I could learn a lot from that, because I, I don't know if you've noticed, colleagues, but I can get a little passionate at times. Yeah, Connelly, yeah, no, I do. I, I know councillor Whitehead and I, we have a different relationship outside this horseshoe, he has been very parliamentary throughout this debate, especially in the last year or so, and I've been the heckler. So to that end, you know, that's the passion speaking. I think we ought to thank Paul Johnson. I had more to say, but the applause says it all. So I think everybody knows who Paul is, and of course, the first thing he would say is thank you to the LRT staff, both Metrolinks and his own staff, they've been an incredible source of information and great communication, and that, that of course will continue. To all of you around the table, thank you again for putting up with the, the stuff that happens in committee, but also outside of committee, as far as this topic goes, and not just with myself. Thanks to the BIAs, Mr. Mayor, the investors, the developers, who have already pumped in hundreds of millions of dollars and are set to pump in hundreds of millions more, to the chambers of commerce, to the millennials in Hamilton, to the new millennials in Hamilton, to the seniors and the kids in the city, to the media, to the new media, to the unions and the trades, who have been a big voice, to all the institutions and all of the above, who have been together on this file in an unprecedented way, every one of the aforementioned together on this file in an unprecedented, an inspiring way. Standing together with the hashtag yes LRT. So another thanks, and, and I hadn't thought of it until councillor Marula brought it up, but in brief, the province, of course. And, and the, the Move Ontario Plan, it's not just Hamilton, it's the GTHA, and it's a huge, multi, multi-billion dollar plan, and it's not going over, it's, as, as hard as it is for us, it's probably three times as hard for the province of Ontario, but they're steadfast, they keep that fund, and they keep pushing higher-order transit, and as the premier said to my son, when she handed over the billion bucks for this project, this isn't about political expediency or getting elected two years from now, it's about twenty years from now. Very courageous change in the Move Ontario Plan. So this higher-order transit on an exclusive track, it is not a, a streetcar, it speaks to sustainability, and it's a city I want to be part of. And finally, folks, one more thing, I just got back from the future, it's, it was ten years in the future, I'm having a beer with Chad Collins, he's still drinking the Michelob Ultra, I'm having a craft beer from one of the new microbrews that keep popping up, we're in one of the new fancy villages in and around an LRT stop, and we're joined by our two twenty-one-year-old sons, who were born on the very same day, and we shared the very same hospital room, our wives did, we just sat stoically and proud. At St. Joe's twenty-one years ago, really eleven years ago, but we're still in the future. And I raise a toast to Chad, and I remind him almost verbatim about that day, this day, in Hamilton City Council chambers, and I say, I'm so grateful, not only for you to really show what courageous change is, again, easy for me in Ward Two, people love the LRT, not everyone. But Collins here tonight has inspired me to no end, and I am very happy today and ten years from now to not only call him a friend, but have that toast with our two twenty-one-year-old sons, just turned eleven on Monday. At one of those fancy villages that both chose to live in, because it wasn't Toronto anymore, or Vancouver, or Calgary, they want to stay and start their life and work and live in the city they call home. That city is Hamilton, I'm very proud to be a Hamiltonian tonight.
Thank you, councillor, councillor Connelly.
Thank you. Boy, this has been a good, good debate tonight, I really, I enjoy listening to everybody, they have really good points. You know, this is a huge undertaking, absolutely. Probably, I, I've got one hu, one that I think is just as huge, when we approved a landfill site twenty years ago. I think it was more controversial than this, there was more, there was more people in each meeting we had than there is here, and that went on, and we fought, and we fought as a council, it was always five to four voting, and I was on the four side, of course, and I was, I was against the landfill site. And we, and, and it was a hard-fought experience, and I'll never forget it, but when the vote came down, and it was decided five to four, that the city would endorse the landfill site, now we weren't the final say, just like what's going on now, we were a commenting agency to the Minister of Environment, but we, we had endorsed the, the comments. So I, I know what it's like to be under pressure, I know what it's like to be the underdog, and, and this is not old hat, but it's a new phase of it, and it's a bigger forum than I've ever experienced. Stony Creek Council wasn't Hamilton Council, and I don't, and that's no regrets on my part or anybody that, that was on it, it was a great council, and we did a lot, a lot of good things. And I really believe that debate, debate is important. I mean, we went through, I don't know how many hours, probably all through this, a few hundred hours, when you say committee meetings and talking and everything, and we all had different views, some more than others, but that's important. I, I don't think you would respect anybody if we all come in and say, yep, that's a good idea, let's go. We have to look at it, we have to examine it, we have to dissect it, and we have to make it, ultimately make a, a decision on, on what we're going to do. I do have a lot of doubts with the LRT. Everybody around this council, the councillors anyways, know my doubts. I, I'm all in favor of transit for the whole city. I guess everybody says this is a start, but I know it's not much of a start for upper, upper, the mountain area, not just Upper Stony Creek, but I'm always getting, sure, oh, we're going to do that, we'll take care of you, Doug. I don't know if I'll be in my lifetime, but maybe my daughter or son will benefit from it, I don't know. I, I do think LRT is old technology, okay? I, I mean, I remember, and I hate to say it, I hope somebody else here is older than me here, but I remember the streetcars. And I know an LRT's now a streetcar, I've been told that eight hundred times, I think, in the last, but I remember them, I remember the tracks, and, and the, the city couldn't wait to get rid of them. And they went to trolleys at the time, it's back in probably the fifties, you know? So even though I think we need better transit, faster transit, more efficient transit, I haven't been convinced that this is the best form to take, you know? I think there's going to be a massive disruption to King Street and throughout the downtown for three or four years. I think we're going to discourage people from coming downtown, I hope not, but I think it's, it could happen or will happen. I think there's going to be a lot of, the side streets are going to be just packed with cars, we don't have the routes that some cities do, and if I look at Kitchener, they have a lot better layout than we have, a lot better layout, I was really impressed by that. I'm hoping, though, that everything's been done, it's not final, and there's room to move on it, because it's going to pass tonight, there's no doubt. But we can move on things, we can adjust things, we can still have input to it, and we can make it better than it is. I don't think the transparency's there that I would have liked to see, you know? And I don't think the transparency was there even, you know, when, when it first started going down to Eastgate, fine, announcement was made, oh, no, no, it's not going to Eastgate. Us, no input from us, just did it. Now it's Queenston Road, okay, you know, we have no say. And then a little bit later, the spur line's going to come in. How much, how much conversation did we have on the spur line? Nothing? Was there, was there a sit-down discussion from, from the people to be here, I don't want to mention any names, but was there ones saying, hey, council, this is what we're planning to do, what's your opinion, what do you think, think it's a good idea? Nothing, just done. And, and then, and then we do, some of us, and I think probably a lot of us, I don't know personally, didn't like the spur line. I know I went to Met, Metrolink and said, you know, it's a useless line, get it out, we can do that with buses, and it's not going to disrupt anything, it's not going to disrupt James Street, you know, we can get going on this thing. And low and behold, and it wasn't because of me, I can tell you that, but for whatever reason, they take it out, they take it off the books, which, okay, but when they do that, again, no discussion, let's do an A-line. No discussion, we'll put the hundred and twenty million dollars towards an A-line. And there might have been discussion with some of you, I don't know, maybe, I, I don't know who, I, I don't know who it was, but there, there could have been, but there wasn't a council, GIC, informal discussion, anything, it was just done. And that's what's been going on, in my opinion, all through this process, okay? Now, maybe they just didn't care if we, if we knew or not, they're just going to do, it's their money, they can do what they want. That's sort of the attitude I got, and I hope it's not the attitude, because all of us have good input, I think. We're all experienced, we're in life, we all, a lot of us have been businessmen, we've gone through this, I know Floyd, Lloyd Ferguson's been a lot of businesses and construction and everything, he's got a lot of good input, I'm sure every one of us do. But it didn't happen, it didn't happen, you know? And if it wasn't for a few people here, we wouldn't, we would even have been further in the dark, because you, the, the subcommittee really, it kind of did a quick report for, for council, but it wasn't what we needed, and we, we said, let's do a special GIC. And that was a good move, I think, on whoever made the final decision, I guess council did, but whoever came up with the idea, good idea, good idea, because now we're going to be informed a little bit more than we were. But I really feel frustrated that I can't get answers, and there's always, well, we'll have to see, that's too early, I don't think so. Yeah, we're looking at that, Doug, you know? And what that means to me is, it's not even on the radar, don't worry about it, you know? They just put you off, and I don't like being treated like that, and in private industry, it wouldn't be, I wouldn't be treated like that. I, 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 where am I here? I, I ran in the last election, this is the first term as a city councillor in Hamilton, I, I had nine years on Stony Creek City Council, which was a great experience, and I learnt a lot, and I felt a lot more comfortable coming here with that experience than if, if I didn't have that experience. Still a learning curve for me, though, and it took me just to learn, just to get to know the councillors, it took me a year, just to feel comfortable with them, talking with them, they trust them, we, I trust each other. And when I ran, I put in my brochure that I, I'm not in support of the LRT, okay? And I didn't have And I didn't have, honestly, no, I didn't talk to every, I knocked on all the doors, but a lot of people aren't there when you knock. But I didn't have any negatives on that. In fact, most of them, even to this day, when I see them on the street, or talk to them, or we're in a meeting, stick to your guns. So I did stick to my guns, and I will stick to my guns tonight, you know? I don't want to be a hypocrite. I don't want to run on a platform that's in black and white, and then turn around and say, "Oh, I didn't really mean that, that was an election ploy." I don't function like that, I don't want to be known as that. So I will be voting against the environmental assessment. But saying that, saying that, I'm also a team player, I think I am anyways, everybody has their opinion of that too with me. But I will not fight this after council decision to go ahead, if that happens. I will not fight it, I will not talk to the press negatively about it, I will support the decision of this council. We've all been on decisions that we didn't like. But I hope when we, even though we don't like it, we do support it. That's what teamwork is on a council. It's not all being 100% on board, but it's being a team after the decision is made. And that's the direction I'll be going in. I really, really hope that it works out great. I have my doubts, but I still, and we still have time to fix the problems that we see or suggest fixes for it. So I really hope that, and again, Paul Johnson's done a great job. I know we've clapped for him, I don't want to clap for him again. But he really, he's been in a very, very, very difficult, hard, and strenuous position. And when we ask him questions, he always got something, at least he's got something to answer, he doesn't say, "I don't know," too often. But you can tell he's done his homework, and that's all you can ask of anybody, so good job, okay? I think we got a lot of work on traffic to get it through the city. It's still going to be cars, you're not getting rid of cars. You're not going to get rid of them. If we got, what, how many cars a day, 50,000 is that, or am I too high on that? I'm not sure. They come through the city? 50,000 an hour? No. I don't think so. Well, we have a lot of cars. We can't forget anybody. I keep talking about millennials, millennials, we're doing it for them. We're not just doing it for them, we're doing it for the seniors. They built this city, they built it. They sweat and blood and went to war for us, and we can't ignore the seniors, they're a very important part of this community. And when we build a train system, or bus system, light rail, if that goes through, if we build it, we have to remember them, and how's it going to affect them? So I think I babbled on enough. I can't talk as long as Chad or Sammy's, just not in my nature, but I feel good of what I said. So I will be voting against it, but I guarantee you my support as far as helping out with this, if that is the decision of council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Johnson.
Thank you. I'm going to make this short and sweet, because councillor Partridge already referenced the rapid ready, so I scratched that note out. Concerns about the unions not being involved, and what the effect is going to be on our bus drivers, I was going to talk about that. I was also going to talk about number one choice was upgrading the HSR, because if we don't have an upgraded HSR, we just simply couldn't sustain the LRT. I also wanted to talk about the divisive, well, divided community. Shouldn't have had the mints. And not only the council, but the city. And I want to thank everybody who was engaged. I want to thank the residents in my ward and all the ones across from one end to the other, who sent in their yes and their no's, and it was a very interesting journey, let me tell you. But I do want to talk about that as this project unfolds, and has unfolded, and major changes were made, then they were changed, and now we're looking at another one today. It's more consistent messaging that I keep coming up with is my questions and the concerns that are posed. And for me, it is the devil is in the details. Councillor Collins, I want to see what's in that envelope. I don't want to wait for Oscar night. I want to know. I actually went to Oakville a couple of years ago, well, when Bruce McQuaid, is it McQuaid? And I specifically asked him the same questions I asked two weeks ago, and last week, and two days ago. At the end of the day, I want to know, how much will it cost for operating, for upgrades? And I got the exact same answer in Oakville as I did two days ago. Don't know. And that really does not, it's not a comfort level with me. Taxpayers, at the end of the day, need to know, it's that simple with me. If we don't have the answers, and until I get those answers, to vote on a project, in my opinion, would be irresponsible. Bottom line, for me, it would be irresponsible. So at this time, I cannot support the EA. I want to thank all my colleagues who spoke before me, trying to mend bridges, let's move on, let's get working together. And it's very nice to see, and I'm really glad, and almost relieved, quite frankly, to hear that. But I cannot vote for this tonight because of the same reasons I couldn't vote for it when I was in Oakville, and when I was asking two days ago. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Skelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the luxury of watching from the sidelines as this council debated where to build a $150 million football stadium. Tim Hortons Field could have been built at the waterfront, it could have been built at Confederation Park, it could have been built off Longwood Road, and it could have been built on the mountain. Instead, after much debate, public input, and political games, the stadium was built on the original site, a huge mistake. Fast forward to today, and the scene is so familiar. But this time, we aren't talking about a sports facility, we're talking about the total transformation of our city, including its historic downtown core. And it doesn't involve just $100 million, it's over $1 billion of taxpayers' money. This council made a mistake with the stadium, and I worry we are headed down the same path if we approve this deeply flawed and costly legacy project. Hamilton's LRT triggered questions and controversy from the get-go, and rightly so. It's funded from the $34 billion provincial initiative called The Big Move, a plan designed to address gridlock across the Greater Toronto-Hamilton area, something provincial officials claim costs our economy billions of dollars each year. We know there is gridlock on the roads leading from Hamilton to Toronto, and from Hamilton to Niagara. We see it all day, every day. What we do not see is gridlock within the city of Hamilton. This LRT will do nothing to address this. The province has given this council a huge opportunity to tackle gridlock, but it will be a lost opportunity if we move forward with the plan before us tonight. We know that this city is not ready for LRT. That has been made very, very clear in the numerous reports presented to council and by our own former director of transit, who argued in favor of BRT. I agree with him. If our intent is to truly get people out of their cars and onto public transit, then we need to provide a system that serves all residents of this city. We need an enhanced transit system with environmentally friendly, battery-run, custom-built, luxury, electric buses, buses that could feed into a BRT line, taking riders from our real growth areas, Waterdown, Aencaster, Benbrook, Stony Creek, to the downtown core, and then to our GO stations. And GO is the second part of the equation that we simply cannot ignore. Some of this money must be used to improve our GO service. Commuters in Hamilton deserve all-day GO service to and from Toronto. Think about a system with trains running all day with express service in peak hours. That would truly get people out of their cars and onto transit. Is that a possibility? Absolutely. In fact, the federal government has already set aside about $170 million just recently to expand the line through Hamilton. We simply cannot ignore GO service in a transit discussion in this day and age in the city of Hamilton. But we're not talking about GO. Tonight, we are here to vote on the environmental assessment of our LRT, a plan I believe is deeply flawed. And I believe that if we support the route that is presented, we will be making a very big, permanent, and costly mistake. How can anyone sitting around this table possibly agree that we should be building an LRT on King Street? Seriously, it is perhaps the most narrow road in our downtown core, and we did not pick it. In fact, no one knows how we ended up with King. I have asked, I'm not alone, I know many people have asked why King was chosen. There has never been a really good reason, and that's because there was never a true study, discussion, or vote supporting King Street. It is the wrong street, period. And yet, we are going to approve a billion-dollar train to run on King Street tonight. There is no parking on the line. The train doesn't run any faster than our current bus system. LRT stops are on average 800 meters apart, which is a very long walk for an able-bodied person, let alone someone with mobility issues. The LRT does not stop at our main bus hub, the McNab Hub. How can we, no, it doesn't. How can we possibly support a train that doesn't link our bus hub? Traffic will be more congested following construction of this LRT than it is today. And trust me, we went on a tour of Kitchener, it's ugly, it's not attractive, it has overhead wires, it has poles, and it has transformers. One of the councillors and I had a discussion today, there are many, many other alternatives that do not require overhead wires. I beg of you, while we approve this, after we approve this, we must look at more current, attractive, appealing, and technologically advanced systems than what we are looking at today. And finally, we have no idea how much it's going to cost to operate, and as of two hours ago, how much it's going to cost, period. On our lap, just a few moments ago, we found out it's going to be extended three kilometers. Who's paying for it? We know the province isn't adding any additional money. They've simply said, "We will allow you to expand and extend this track to Eastgate, but we're not giving you any additional funds. It will be used from the billion-dollar envelope." What does that mean? If we run into trouble, where will we get the money? I know my councillor across the table has always argued that we need a contingency fund. We just ate the contingency fund. Does that mean we will eventually shorten this line? Be prepared, folks, this line isn't truly going to Eastgate. We just know that we are allowed to include it in the existing envelope, but we haven't been given any additional funds. We've heard about the power of moving forward, of building for our future. Well, I too want to build a healthy, sustainable future for my children, and my grandchildren, and your children, and your grandchildren. But I also believe in fiscal responsibility, and I don't believe that the plan before us is the right way to go. I don't think we have the dollars, and I worry about how much it's going to cost our children to pay for it. I would much rather see an enhanced citywide transit system feeding all-day express GO train transit. That's not going to happen. Tonight, we are going to approve the EA, and as councillor Collins said, once it is approved, there is no turning back. I will not be supporting what's before us. But I hope council recognizes the deep flaws within the plan before us, and makes deep, positive changes to ensure that we build the best LRT system anywhere across Canada. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and certainly to all the previous speakers. First and foremost, I've crossed out and written more notes in as comments were made, and I'm trying not to duplicate, but I think everybody has had an opportunity around this table to be as passionate as possible. And you know, I think this is the first time we've had everybody respectful sitting around the table, and not sending out, you know, little comments or anyone knows on the side, and I really do appreciate that. So first and foremost, I want to thank all of city staff and Metro Links who are involved on this file, and to the public, all of them, who have written, sent emails, stopped me at wherever I've been shopping or out in the public, whether you're for or against. Believe me, this has not been, and will not be, an easy move forward. I have read all the materials as best I could, recognizing the large volume, and I think a couple of boxes were brought in earlier, I don't know if that's everything, but I saw it. All of the volumes of documents that we have been supplied with through staff, the inundation of emails and calls, et cetera. This has definitely divided and split the community. I have had major concerns, and I want to be very respectful of MPP McMeekin, who is here this evening, and appreciate him being here, and being here on a number of occasions as we started at our meetings on LRT. But it's been frustrating, and again, it's evident again tonight, we're at the 11th hour, we get new information. I can't work on, in the best interest of the taxpayers of my community, on 11th hour, information or changes coming forward. That's very unfair to all of us around the table, and the taxpayers out there. So I'm putting that on the line. I also want to thank, and I hope he doesn't make it a point of order, but councillor Collins. I have seen and heard tonight the passion in what he expressed that I think we all feel around the table. If anybody could feel the pain tonight, as comments were being said, you could feel it. And I think we will all leave tonight realizing, not one of us wants to let go of $1 billion. And I've said that to everybody, we don't want to lose it. I personally feel there is something better. This is not, this should not be the roadblock that says, "This is it, and there's nothing else, and you know what, vote for it, and throw it out, and say, 'Take your chances.'" That's not the position I want to be put in. I was elected as the councillor in Ward 10 to do the very best I can, not only for Ward 10, but for Hamilton. I'm a born and raised Hamiltonian, and proud of that, from parents who came from outside of the country and made Hamilton their home. And I sat here and written some points, and I am going to read them off. I have always supported BRT in this city, and truly believe that this is the most efficient way to improve service to not only the downtown core, but certainly Eastgate Mall and Dundas. Such a system, I really feel, could run along King Street westbound and Main Street eastbound. There'd be no need for a tunnel at Gage, a bridge at the 403, and infrastructure upgrades. Weighing all the comments and driving this route almost daily, I've made my own observations and noted many concerns many times, and if I pass them on to staff. I too am a transit user, and that has been mentioned in the past. For full two years, I decided not to purchase a car, and I took public transit. And I can tell you right now, Debbie's here from Transit, that I think our transit system's phenomenal. You know, when I get down that B-line at the top of my street in the morning, and maybe that's where some of my frustration is, and I can be downtown Hamilton 30 minutes, 35 minutes, no stops, convenience of getting on, getting off, I'm thrilled. And I know there's many residents in my area that agree. So I too am concerned that we are not doing the best we can. I really have problems with the system only on King Street. And, you know, I'm going to leave it at that. But I can tell you, currently, the B-line is able to navigate with little problems, both on King and Main Street. Only a week ago, we found out, and I've been asking many residents since, we found out that, you know, there'll still be buses on King Street. Well, that's excellent. So really, let's add two trains, pinch points for traffic will not be able to continue easterly or westerly in the only easterly or westerly in the only one lane provided, no left-hand turn lanes, and now add buses along with emergency vehicles, service delivery vehicles, in the only traffic vehicle lane. King Street traffic will be snarled. Oh, but we do have alternative routes we can take. Yes, we do. You can take Cannon to York or Aberdeen. Did everyone read Carl Turkster's letter to the editor today? Professional engineer has certainly doubted the issues commuters will face daily, from attending work, entertainment events, or just going to visit my mom, who is in Westdale. Add to the mix through-traffic on already congested side streets. I really believe that, you know, whether we like it or not, and we keep debating this, and we will probably debate it again in the future as far as two-way traffic on Main Street, heaven forbid, but we have to thank our forefathers of the 60s that determined the east-west one-way routes on King and Main Streets allowed for an efficient flow of traffic, taking cars away from residential neighborhoods, and allowing safe access to the 403 both westbound and eastbound. Pretty well, all of our developments since then have been geared to ingress and egress via these routes. So, getting down to the crux of this is, I really do have major concerns with the unknowns. And I don't know how we can sit here and say, "Let's support this moving on, let's spend 30, 40, $100 million more," when I've already been criticized and continue to be criticized, "Well, if you let this go, you've wasted 30 million." I really do feel uncomfortable, and I feel it's not fair to the taxpayers that we don't have more information unknowns as to the system that's going to be in place, and just today, I had a communication to Chris Murray with regards to another type of system. We did take a drive to Kitchener last week, and I'll tell you, as was mentioned before, their system, their tracks is laid out, I'm not going to say the system's different, it's the same system, but they have a much wider area, they use former rail beds, they have, the double tracks go down roadways with three lanes on either side. It's not the same as Hamilton, because we have, unfortunately, we have, and we have to face that. That's why we have one-way Main Street and King Street, is because we have the 403 exits in and out of this city. So, I also had concerns with regards to the current and projected ridership. We aren't there, we're not going to be there for a long time. So, in the end, I am. Please, don't get me wrong, I support development. Any developer that I have come to meet with me in my ward is, why not more? But I tell you, I am fully supportive of moving this city forward, but I just don't believe that this is the best opportunity before us, and it's the only opportunity before us right now. So even today, as I said, I mentioned it to the city manager about other systems that may be available. And hopefully, at the end, I know this will go through tonight, I am not supporting it. And I do say that I will work as a team, I have no problem with that, because I continue and will continue to have the best interests of our taxpayers and mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Green.
You know, Mr. Mayor, this morning, I woke up and I got my good luck tie on, my lucky jacket, and I came down to City Hall at about 8:30 and was asked the question about whether or not I believed today was going to go forward with LRT. And you know, my answer was that I believed in this city, and that I believed in this council. And I can tell you that, over the course of this debate, as somebody who does not identify with any political party, I've heard a lot of partisan talking points. And as a nonpartisan, I have to tell you that, putting politics aside, I'd like to begin by thanking the premier, Minister Del Duca, and of course, as has been identified, the only area representative, liberal representative in government, and the always honourable Ted McMeekin, for delivering a billion dollars to this city. You know, I thought we'd had the last of our 13-hour meetings, but we might be on pace for that tonight. So I'll, I'll keep things as short as I possibly could. I remember distinctly when the announcement was made, Mr. Mayor, and members of this council and the public, that I made this statement, it felt like we were winning the Super Bowl in my first year as a rookie. And today, I had stated in the media that this is the biggest political decisions of our careers. I believe that no matter where we all end up, this billion-dollar decision shaping the future of this city will be one of the biggest political decisions we make. And so with that being said, this is fundamentally about how we view and value the future of our city. And as I have said, it is not about moving people from point A to point B, it's about moving this city from point A to point B. And I have been listening very intently this evening to the arguments that have been made around this table. I have been listening intently to the 26 hours in meetings, the 10 years of conversation in this city about this project, and there are still some who believe we're not ready. Mr. Mayor, I disagree. I believe that not only is this city ready, but we are poised to enter into a new phase of growth, development, and prosperity, one that I hope and pray will not leave anybody behind. We have spent a disproportionate amount of time in the weeds, time that I feel could have been better spent on some of the finer points of discussion that have been brought up here today. But rather than outline all the differences that we have around this table and in the audience tonight, I just want to reflect on the areas where we have found considerable agreement. Mr. Mayor, I have heard, both here at the GICs, in the public realm, and social media, a new interest, and I say new, a new interest, a unified interest in supporting public transit in this city. Mr. Mayor, I've heard that there is an appetite around this table to invest in our transit system. I would be remiss to say, however, that at budget time, we delayed the 10-year transit I would be remiss to say that we have missed opportunities during the last 10 years that would have brought us to a point that perhaps might have satisfied some of the ridership numbers or some of the other finer points of disagreement in this debate. However, what I have heard over the last few months is that this project, this project has the potential to be a catalyst for renewed investment in our HSR, in our conventional transit. I have heard folks, who quite frankly, I have not seen around transit conversations, newly interested in the prosperity and development of citywide, true, citywide, public transit. Mr. Mayor, we have heard about a need, in fact, a priority for good transit across this city. And I think councillor Collins rightly identified the barriers that are still present in the fact that we have an area rating system that does not adequately support citywide transit. So if there's one thing that we take from tonight, and I say this intentionally because of the people that are here, I cannot comment on the no-LRT side, I did not have a lot of dealings with them, but I do know that they spent a tremendous amount of time and money articulating their points, which included, as we've heard here today, it included a major shift in the way that we fund conventional transit. I have sat in this seat, Mr. Mayor, talking about the way that we use our gas tax, pleading with this council to invest in HSR, supporting our sisters and brothers of the ATU, and I'm going to do that today. And why I wore my lucky tie, Mr. Mayor, is because this is indeed a historic pivot point in the future of our city. And everybody who's here today needs to bear witness to what was said here around the support for our 10-year transit strategy in creating a true, integrated, public transit system in this city. Because that ought not be a cheap political talking point to be used for convenience at this point in time, and then taken away when it comes back to budget time next year when we deferred this 10-year transit strategy. That if we make those folks pay at the fare box, then I firmly believe that at some point in time, we need to seriously enter into this conversation around area rating. So that folks that have opinions about how we should be doing public transit, do so by bringing to the table general levy funding for public transit. We've heard it here today, it has been by far the most consistent common ground that we have found around this table, Mr. Mayor. And it is one that members of the public, live stream, new media, old media, everybody will remember today, everybody will remember those two meetings, 26 hours, hundreds of delegates, that was our common ground. So reflecting on the words of councillor Collins, who again, you know, has been a consummate gentleman, I have to, you know, I'll say this right now, that I've certainly been on the extreme end, I don't think you'll find two more extreme people than councillor Whitehead and myself in terms of this issue, and beat in the trenches back and forth. Somebody who, no matter what happens here, when we go in that back room, I can tell you, we never take it off the playing field. And so I'll close by saying this, Mr. Mayor, I look forward to a time when councillor Whitehead and I can be back in that foyer with a joint press conference. Thank you very much.
You may be able to do that today. You may be able to do that today. Yes.
If I could say so, today is very much about councillor Whitehead bringing forward this opportunity for the expansion, so he will be at the podium by himself, I'll be standing behind him, and yourself, to support that press conference.
On that note, we have councillor Whitehead.
Yes, yeah.
You have five minutes, Terry. No, 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 all the time you need.
It might surprise you, I did have a discussion earlier tonight with the mayor and a couple of councillors, and I said, "Maybe if I don't say anything, it would speak volumes." However, this...
All right, thank you, Terry, thank you very much, thank you. I have, I have myself. Oh, no.
But this truly is a milestone in a significant time, in a significant place, with a very divided council, very divided community. And as leaders, we have an incumbent and fiduciary responsibility to understand where this community is, and understand there is a divide. And as I said recently with the mayor, and Vantet neighbor to neighbor, as leaders, we should be building bridges across the great divide and leave a better community behind us, and that's what I am doing here tonight. I want to start by saying, I mean, I put a lot of effort in understanding higher-order transit across North America, and certainly as it's been proposed here at City Hall. I have identified a number of concerns, and they're legitimate. And they're same types of concerns that you will hear from many that currently do not support LRT. I want to thank those in a context of a democracy where there's public discourse, and there's views on both sides of this issue. What concerns me is the public discourse has to be respectful and understanding that no one, no one has a monopoly on the right answers. It's about informing your position and informing your decisions. I find it unfortunate that we have gone to a level, and you know, I don't want to be lecturing the general public, because I think it's great that they've been engaging, I would only caution that we shouldn't be marginalizing anyone that has a different point of view. That's not the society and the values I bring to the table, it's not one that I espouse to. I spoke to a group of 250 seniors this morning, and whether they were on the side of LRT or not is irrelevant, but they feel hurt. They feel hurt because they feel they've been marginalized by some of the comments they've heard in this community. The fact that they went to war and fought battles for our democracy, the fact that they lived and struggled through depression, not depression, the fact that they have grandchildren, to say that they're short-sighted, they're selfish, it was really disheartening when I heard these views. It wasn't about LRT, it was about what was happening in this community. So I think we need to start today, in understanding and appreciating that no demographic in our community should be marginalized in any way, whether it's the millennials, or whether it's the seniors, or whether it's Gen X, it really doesn't matter. We're all entitled to have a different point of view, or agree, or disagree respectfully. And I hope that when we move forward from this vote here tonight, that there'll be appreciation that threats don't work, that only means that your argument isn't sound. Keep your argument forward, provide the facts, and debate respectfully. I want to thank Ted McMeekin, a special individual and a special man in this community. And I say that with all sincerity, that when it appeared this was going off the rails, and I can tell you, and I think councillor Collins identified that, if we had the vote to, was it a week ago, and I was criticized for moving the motion to buy another seven days, there's no doubt in my mind either that the EA would not have passed, and we would have beaten Nick Weigmeyer. Seven days, a lot of things can happen. I also want to thank Ted McMeekin, because during that long, arduous discussion, Ted took the time, when he saw me in the lobby, to pull me aside and have a very frank, candid in respect to where we are in the context of the LRT. I also want to thank Matthew Green, because a lot of people don't know, or maybe do know, and I, because I had a lot of emails from all across Ontario. The debate that we had on TVO was telling in regards to where we are here tonight. It was very respectful, it was statesmanlike, and I had people saying it was very informative on both sides of the issue. So there are, to every coin, two sides. The question now is, how do we move forward, how do we bridge the gap, and how we build that bridge? I think the start was the discussion, direct discussion I had with Ted in the lobby, with Mr. McMeekin, and certainly, I can't forget the mayor. I can tell you that you can only leverage so much with tools you have in your toolbox. I think, I hope, we provided additional leverage to do something that I think was material to the success, the potential success of LRT. I've argued on TVO, and I've argued on many occasions, there are a lot of issues and concerns on ridership and cost, but at the end of the day, what was really concerning to me was what message are we sending to the balance of this community when we build a system that's truncated from original plan, that wasn't chosen by accident, it was chosen with purpose? A plan that took us to a destination location, a location that is on the boundaries of Stony Creek, close to the new GO station that they will be building, and is plugged into the blast network that serves the mountain, Ancaster, and beyond. To me, East Gate was a beacon. It wasn't just about the viability and minimizing risk to the taxpayer of this community, but it also, to me, represented a beacon. And what I mean by that is if we were really serious and wanted to send a very powerful message to this community in regards to, we're all inside the same tent, in regards to meeting the needs of this community, to me, nothing said that more than establishing East Gate, because East Gate is at the periphery, that provides that service level to a greater population outside of the lower city. So not only are we enhancing the service in the lower city, but we are now demonstrating with what has been passed here tonight, and with hopefully more discussions and commitments from the province of Ontario, we are sending a very powerful message, and that is that this transit system we are building is where... this transit system we are building is where everybody and everyone will have the benefit. And that is important to me. Yes, I have, again, I want to reiterate some shortcomings, I believe there are some shortcomings, but I had a discussion with Paul Johnson just as recently as last night. You know what, Paul? You have done a yeoman's job on this file with all your staff, and I really appreciate your candid, your professionalism, your commitment and dedication to this file, and your ability to understand the very tough concerns and questions I oppose to. You have done an incredible job, and you deserve to be where you are because you are clearly the professional we always believed you to be. There's another group I want to thank. I want to thank all my friends on social media. I think it was a while back, and I'm going to name them, I have the deepest respect for them, we don't always agree, that's not surprising, Ryan McGil. And in fact, in fact, Ryan McGil did write an op-ed or something, I believe it was maybe in the Hamiltonian, and it might be surprising to some of you, but in his writings, he had indicated that one thing about councillor Whitehead is he's prepared to engage, and he does listen. And that was always my purpose, is to challenge your convictions, challenge your perceptions, challenge your facts, to ensure that we're coming together with an understanding of what is best for this community. And yes, you helped inform that discussion, many of you, some, well, I'll leave out, but most of you did, and I really appreciate the interactions with each and every one of you. The other thing that's important is, and I think we've heard it very clearly, that there is a divide in this community on this issue. I have always said, give me a plan I can defend, and I am prepared. I mean, here's an, I'm an individual that, I did a speech a while back, and so my councillor colleagues heard me, and I stood up in front of a neighborhood, by the way, it was my neighborhood, and it was a neighborhood that didn't want to have adult autism group home, and it was over 200 people there. I stood up, and heard nothing but NIMBY type of conversation taking place. I heard that they thought it was a great program, but it shouldn't be in the neighborhood. These are people I see every day and I'm proud of. And when I stood up, when I heard that one word "but," even that Paul Maller who's sitting next to me said, "Terry, don't do it," and I said, "I got to, it's the right thing to do." I stood up and called my neighbors on it. I said, "This is a service that's needed in this community, in a society we have a responsibility to deliver this service." And by the way, I have an autistic son, and I have a son that I worry about. I have a son that I don't know what his future lies, but he has every damn right to continue living in this community, and if he wants to live in this neighborhood, and there's a group home that he can live in and provide that level of service, he is entitled to it. And I can tell you, I'm proud of that neighborhood because that changed the tone. And not only changed the tone, I had people dropping off apple pies and fruit from their gardens, and were really respectful, and I can tell that group home has worked out very well, and there hasn't been any complaints. So I'm prepared to stand up and defend something. But what is handed to me has to be defendable. Regardless of, again, some of the shortcomings and concerns I have, I weigh everything, good, bad, and the ugly, hopefully to make the right decision on behalf of the city of Hamilton. And I had real concerns that without Eastgate, this plan maximized the risk to this community. I firmly, wholeheartedly, with all the studies I've read, believe that Eastgate will further minimize this risk, and by that, ensure a greater viability in the delivery of this service to this community. I also believe, when I talk to Paul Johnson, that we have more work to do. There's no question that on the design and some of the issues that have been identified, we can fix it. We can make the necessary changes. Paul's indicated he would have working groups to ensure that we provide a design that we can be proud of, and that isn't intrusive or obstructive, so we can, and have plenty of time, to improve on this plan. I am prepared, as I have in regards to the amount of research I put into LRT, I think I'm not, I won't call myself an expert, but I need to stretch the imagination, but I certainly could sit down with the best of them and have that discussion. And I'm prepared to work with my colleague, not only to support the Eastgate piece, but to further enhance and improve a system we can all be proud of. You know, there are a guy, Rob LaRino, and his quote was, "Hope floats, but efforts propel." I'm prepared to put the effort into this hope. And lastly, I want to thank my wife, because I think Chad Collins said it, this is tough on everyone. And I know we chose to take this job, but we didn't choose to be political opportunists. I wrote an article in the Hamiltonian a while back, and I talked about how proud I am of this council, and a lot of the achievements we have, in fact, realized is buried behind this debate, and yet we have done so much. We have moved yardsticks, miles. I've never been so proud of a council regardless of positions we take on any issue, because around this table, ladies and gentlemen, we have people that are committed and dedicated to the communities, they do their research, they do their work, and they want to make Hamilton a better place for all, and they all firmly believe it. And the strength we have is the demographics, the values, the issues, whether it's environment or poverty or economics, it doesn't matter what the issue is. I can tell you that there is an expert or somebody around this table that brings that value to this table and argues it extrinsiously to help inform the decisions that take place around this chamber. I have no issue with anyone on either side of this, and in fact, I respect and commend, regardless of what side you are on this debate, because you have contributed to this and helped inform this discussion. And I want to thank each and every one of you, and I want to thank each and every one for your patience with me on this file as well.
So I have no further speakers, so I think it turns to me, and I just want to thank you all for a collection of really amazing presentations here today. I'm really quite wowed by all the passion shown here today, not only by members of council, but from the community at large, and I do appreciate that the audience has been respectful and not shouting out, and that hopefully is something that will continue. I think that is part of the democratic process, good protest or contrary thoughts and views are part of what the process, part of the process that we deal with each and every day. So that is to be respected and appreciated. I am with councillor Connelly on the notion that I hope that after today, we can get on to a program of making this work, as opposed to continuing to try and unravel this, I think, very positive initiative for our community, and you certainly know where I stand on this. It has been something that I've been passionate about for many, many years, going back to the first term of council, and I think some of the frustration you hear from some of the avid supporters is that this has not been a short journey. This has been a 10-year process of getting us to this point with an awful lot of study and review, and a lot of information that actually does exist. And so, you know, we really have an opportunity now to come together, which I hear a lot today, and I hope that is true, that we can come together and start moving forward on a program that I think provides transit for all parts of our community. That's the objective. It's never been about just King Street. It's never been about just putting an LRT line in the middle of our city, it's about growing our entire transportation network, including cars. No one's excluding cars from this picture at all. It's always about creating that balance so that we can provide multiple options for people as we go forward in our community. And so when we, today, we approved virtually $72 million of additional transit enhancements that are coming to us. The last two years, we've actually, on traditional transit, the last two years, we've provided an additional 25 buses that are operating predominantly on the mountain. Our commitment, as councillor Green pointed out, to public transportation as it should be, is enhanced, and I think we're in agreement that that is something that we need to continue to focus on. It's not the only thing we focus on, we have focused on many other things. Just recently, collectively, we also focused on poverty, a very big issue in our community, and came together unanimously and said, $50 million more over the next 10 years is the right thing to do to ensure that there's those folks that are struggling in our community help, help and opportunity. And so this is another opportunity for us to create that economic uplift that comes with LRT. And I'm not going to get into debating, you know, some of the things that were said today, I'm going to keep moving forward on making sure that we have accurate and clear and precise information, and I believe that we have had. We have had clear, concise reports from our staff. Paul Johnson has done a terrific job. Our city manager has been very steadfast in providing transparent and open information. And if we need to do more of that than we should and we will. Clearly, if there's more information to be had here, that there are gaps in this information, we need to do a better job of informing our general public, and we now have, hopefully after tonight, an opportunity to do that in a more positive and progressive way. But I hope that at some point, we come together and say, "Council has decided, we're going to move forward." Traditionally, we don't second guess all of the votes we have, and we've had some close votes on some issues, they're not all unanimous, but at the end of the day, when council decides, I think we have an obligation to move forward together. And we can do that. We can certainly hear the issues, the complications that others might have, and we have an opportunity to really come together as a council on this particular issue, as we have on many and many other issues, and the midterm report is in production right now, and when you look at it, pretty darn impressive what we've been able to do in a year and a half and two years' time. We're not done yet, we have more to do. So let me thank firstly Ted McMecon for his steadfast, hard, hard work. And I think councillor Green rightfully pointed out, you know, the province of Ontario, this government, really, you know, in true political terms, if it was a political issue, have no business dropping a whole lot of money here. Most of the seats are in Toronto, and most of the money sadly does tend to go to Toronto, but not on this issue and not on many other issues that Ted has put his shoulder behind. Not only on this issue, but many others like hospitals, Mohawk College, McMaster University, I mean, the list is long. Our local Liberal representative has done a fantastic job of delivering for this city of Hamilton, so Ted, thank you. And for me, this is not about politics, it's not about the next election, it's not about me or any of us individually, it's about what's in the best interest of our community. And in my view, and I think in the view of many, and hopefully we can convince the rest of our community, this is an investment that is going to change our community for sure, but change it for the better. And when you know, when we think about it, I think Lloyd said it quite some time ago, if we think about the major investments that have happened in the past that we today couldn't do without, one of them is clearly the expressway, the 401, 403, QEW, back in the day were contentious issues, and where would we be without them today? And I think this investment, this project, this very important people-moving and economic uplift project is a critical step forward for our city that is going to provide not only jobs, it's going to provide additional opportunities, it's going to provide additional uplift. So I do want to thank councillor Terry Whitehead. Now Terry and I have been at odds on this issue most of the way, and I do accept the fact that Terry wants to build bridges, and I've said this to Terry personally, you know, I'm on for building bridges, but it's hard to cross that bridge when it's always on fire, but, but there's an opportunity, and you know, Terry has been actually steadfastly saying that he wants to have the best project possible, and I take that at his word. And I fully agree, and we all want that. And so if we take that attitude and we all continue to work together, I think we can come up with something, hopefully, you know, not too far removed from the plan, because it's well thought out, well researched, well developed, and certainly has had most of our experts working on, that we can make some adjustments that will favor it, but at the same time, keep moving forward to deliver a project that I think is important for our community. So on all of those notes, and I want to thank all members of council, these are game-changing, difficult issues, it will be a bumpy road, I've said that all along, this is another bump in the road, and we're going to have to get past that, and hopefully, we can get past the other bumps a little bit more smoothly than this one today. And if we come together, we can certainly make that happen. So I'm going to stop because I know when I'm ahead. I think the process here has been very fulsome, I think I've heard some really fantastic speaking points today, a lot of passion from all members of council. I see all friends here as well, I'm not looking for enemies, I'm looking for collaboration, I'm looking for opportunities to come together and make our city better, and 95% of the time, we do that spectacularly well. We can do that on this issue as well, if we come together with good minds and good hearts, we can make this thing work to the benefit of our greater community, and I hope that we can continue to do, as Doug Connelly said, once we make a decision, we come together and we move forward collectively. So thank you all members of council, and for all your great debates. I am going to call the question, which I think is before us, moved by councillor Whitehead, seconded by myself.
Standing recorded.
Standard recorded vote on the issue of the motion before you to include Eastgate. Did you read the motion earlier on?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we read it one more time so our audience is clear?
Thank you, I'm going to skip some of the number stuff because it's really relevant. Moved by myself, seconded by Mayor Eisenberger, that the Hamilton Light Rail environmental project report, a denim for B-line, referred to council by General Issues Committee on April 19th, that A, that the Hamilton B-line light rail transit environmental project report, EPR, a denim attached to appendix A to report PD 17056B, updated to include a three-kilometer section from Queenston traffic circle to Eastgate as shown in the 2011 approved EPR. B, that the updated EPR a denim for LRT system from Eastgate to McMaster be submitted by staff to the Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change, and after the EPR is submitted, a copy of the final submission be provided to council for information. C, that the current provincial procurement process be updated to include the three-kilometer section from Queenston traffic circle to Eastgate as outlined in the updated EPR a denim. And D, that this resolution be forward to the province of Ontario, the premier and the minister of transportation and metro links.
Okay, thank you. The motion's before you. All in favor, please stand.
Mayor Eisenberger, councillor Aidan Johnson, councillor Jason Farr, councillor Matthew Green, councillor Sam Marula, councillor Chad Collins, councillor Tom Jackson, councillor Terry Whitehead, councillor Lloyd Ferguson, councillor Arlene Vanderbeek.
And it would be great if you kept clapping for the folks that are opposed as well. I think that'd be fine. And those, those that are opposed, please stand.
Councillor Donna Skelly, councillor Doug Connolly, councillor Maria Pearson, councillor Brenda Johnson, councillor Judy Partridge.
Okay, thank you. Let me thank you all for a very positive debate, and thank the audience for your respectfulness. Much appreciated. Thank you all, and we'll move on to some other items. Councillor Partridge, you had an item you wanted to raise?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do have a motion that I'd like to bring forward, and it is in the true spirit of everybody working together and forming a council team. If I can have a seconder for the motion?
What, what is the motion?
Yep, councillor, well, I need a seconder in order to get it on the floor, I can't speak to it, right?
No, I need it to be reasonable, that, do we have the motion before?
No, no.
We don't?
No, I did talk about it and reference it in my speech, but it is seconded by councillor Johnson. It's very short.
Okay, so I think we, we probably have to deal with that in motions, because this is separate and apart. Go ahead.
Would it be possible to perhaps refer that motion to committee for discussion, rather than?
I'd like to deal with it now.
Okay.
If it fails, that's fine.
Okay.
But I think in the true spirit of what we're talking about, Mr. Mayor, if I may continue?
Okay.
So my motion, and again, it's in the true spirit of everybody talking about wanting to work together, and I think that's very important for this going forward. So the motion is, move by myself and seconded by councillor Brenda Johnson, that city council approve a council team, a Queens Park Transit Liaison Committee, consisting of councillors Chad Collins, Judy Partridge, Lloyd Ferguson, Sam Marula, Maria Pearson, and councillor Whitehead, to be a working committee of council on all related provincial transit matters affecting the residents of Hamilton. And if I may speak to it briefly?
Okay.
And I think, you know, now that the important step has been taken for us to vote on the EA addendum, and it's successful in moving it forward, I think it is imperative that this council establish a closer and more continuous liaison with Metrolinks and Queens Park with regards to the future transit needs of Hamilton. And Mr. Mayor, you referred to it yourself just two seconds ago, on the importance of looking at transit in the broader community, particularly with the, the blast network. I know that some voted to allow the EA to proceed, and maybe they did so because they were worried about losing the billion dollars. I don't think that the province would be that punitive. But before we hit another milestone with this process, I really believe that we need to bring everybody together on council, and we need to work together for what's best for our city. And clearly, the LRT is a divisive issue for our residents, and I think we owed it, owe it to a divided community to ensure that from this point forward, this council is fully engaged on all aspects of the transit file. And similar to what we did for the stadium, that we proactively explore every alternative, have that fulsome discussion about what we need to do in moving this forward. And Minister Dalduca has stated clearly in his letter, that they want to work with council, and to be flexible, and have a working committee of council, I think fits nicely into that. So that's the spirit of what I'm bringing forward. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Green?
Mr. Mayor, in the spirit of what we've just gone through, I'm, I'm having some confusion on this, because we have a governance subcommittee, we have an LRT subcommittee which works very closely with Metrolinks, and in fact, the mover of the motion asked for a committee of the whole to deal with these issues, and now is, is suggesting that we're going to circumvent a selection committee, handpick folks, and create another subcommittee of a subcommittee. And I, I have some serious unreadiness and confusion about the, the nature of this, when we have an existing governance subcommittee, which we went through a selection process to get on, and we have Marula as chair, as well as an LRT subcommittee. So I, like, I really, I'm not clear how the mover of the motion would seek to circumvent the LRCT subcommittee with a special subcommittee of the whole, and then go to do another subcommittee with Queens Park unbeknownst to this GIC, claiming that everybody needs to have a stake in this. So I am certainly not in support in any way, shape, or form of leading in this direction, when it seems completely contrary to everything else that's been put forward, given the spirit of this conversation, and given the, the previous motions of the mover. So I don't, I really don't know where this comes from, and I, and I, I'm kind of a little bit confused by it, given the fact that it's a duplicate of, and a redundant creation of something, solving a problem that quite frankly, I don't think exists, when we have already, to her suggestion and leadership, a committee of the whole that's dealing with these types of issues. So Metrolinks has been here now in an implementation subcommittee for the entire term of council, always accessible and open to questions. Councilors from time to time drop in. I'll say now what I said the last time this type of motion came to the table. If you're interested in those conversations, I encourage you to come and be a part of that conversation. And if you're interested in the governance subcommittee, or the Hamilton Day, or anything else where it is lobbying upper levels of government, then let's do that as a whole. Because quite frankly, I'm a little bit offended that, you know, names have been named, and this committee's already been struck, and quite frankly, you know, a lot of us have been left out of this conversation. So it seems like a complete contradiction to where the mover was going in, in her previous intentions, given the spirit of this conversation. Thank you, I will not be supporting that.
Nope. Thank you. Councillor Collins?
No, I, I think I heard what the intent was from councillor Partridge, was to forge a stronger working relationship with the province, and, and that's something that needs to happen in the spirit of bringing people together. So I, 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 like councillor Marula, would suggest that this be referred back, as councillor noted, she hadn't talked to anyone coming in today. Her desire is to bring people together rather than tear things apart. And, and I would suggest that there's ample opportunity for us to have this discussion at a subcommittee level, in order to find where there's common ground between all people on council.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Partridge?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that, Mr. Mayor. But again, you know, I'm, I'm always, I think it's unfortunate that when we're having discussions around the table, that it immediately turns into an attack, and, you know, and I would say using a word like offended is disrespectful, because, no, you used the word, sir.
I know it.
I didn't use it.
Okay, all right, so let's not, let's not, let's not evolve into, you know, the the org.
No, excuse me, excuse me.
We're on a good track, so carry on.
Excuse me, thank you, thank you. I do appreciate that. And, and to exactly that point, I think we have had great discussion here. We have had some very passionate, respectful comments made. We've all been listening to what's been said, except for a couple of, you know, comments being made under one's breath. But I think truly, this is about pulling people together. And, you know, we got to show some leadership and pull people together around this table. That's what this is about. And, you know, I'm, I'm saddened that at the end of all this, we would start to deteriorate into something that really isn't called for. So I'm quite fine with the suggestion by councillor Collins and councillor Marula, and to continue working on this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Farr?
I just want to say after tonight, I'm feeling more united than ever, and very together around this table, just, just to be fair. And, and I'm glad we're going to refer this to governance, it's the right, it's the right move.
Thank you. Councillor Skelly?
I, thank you through the chair. I just wanted to say that I do believe that it is probably the right route to go, but I do also believe that it would be much better to have an idea, a, a conversation, a direct conversation with council members and the province. What happened tonight with this paper, for example, is an example where you're kind of caught off guard at the last minute, and I don't think we want that to happen as we move through this process. It's going to be a very complex process, there will be many changes, there will be things, and we don't want to see it at the last minute. So it would be wonderful to have our, to have, I think, a stronger relationship, where we're all very comfortable with what is being said, and it's shared with us as members of council, because we all have so much at stake.
Thank you. Councillor Ferguson?
Just so I'm clear then, so the intent is to refer this back, and I think councillor Collins is going to move it to governance, LRT subcommittee, or the transit GIC?
Governance, is what I heard.
Governance, okay, that's fine. I'm just not ready to debate it tonight. I, I don't like this walked on, so I'd like to refer it back.
And I'm, and I'm with you on that one. I think we could probably just get this to governance committee and have a good discussion there, and, and, and end on a good note tonight. I think we are on a good track, we don't need to get off that track. I think it's unfortunate, we, we are kind of teetering. So, move by councillor Collins, seconded by councillor Marula, this issue be deferred to our governance committee. All in favour?
Carried.
Carried, thank you.